Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our council budget work session this evening. We are getting ready to get started and I'm going to have the clerk call the role for us and then I will explain tonight's procedures. Madam Clerk, will you call the role, please?
Counselor Sanders. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Chambers. Counselor Merrick. Counselor Whaley. Counselor Stritchett. Counselor B.
We do have a quorum present and the way that this meeting is much more informal than a typical council meeting, this is something we do generally once per year, get together and work just as a council body to go through any questions, comments, changes we would like to make possibly tonight before we bring a budget to a vote at a regular council meeting. This budget work session is not open to questions from the public. This is simply for us to use a working document in front of us to work through. If you have questions or comments about the budget, you can, as our clerk sent out when she made a notification of the meeting, you may certainly reach out to any of us individually or you may send a group email to the whole council. We will be happy to get back in touch with you with any information we have regarding your questions or comments on what is, like I said, still a working and living document. So our normal format is we have a written budget in front of us. It is done by tabs. We will begin at the beginning and go tab by tab, allowing counselors to address any questions, comments they would like to make in each general section. And then at the end of the meeting, after we've covered each of those tabs, I will open it up for counselors and/or the mayor to have any just closing comments or final comments or questions that are not specifically in order by tab. So we will start that way. If all of you gentlemen have your budget in front of you, we will be starting with the very first tab, which is the General Fund. Is there anyone present who has questions or comments they would like to start with Mr. Whaley, do you have the floor?
Um, Mr. Oakley, please tell me that the new software is going to help make this budget process and document that we receive a little more reader-friendly?
We will have some additional reports that we can pull directly from the new accounting system. Your kind of line item by line item report probably is going to look similar to this. It's just going to have a little more color, blues and stuff to it. So I would say the full, you know, if you start at account number one through account number, you know, 2,000, that portion will look similar. However, there are some additional reports that can be pulled in the budgeting application of this module that are supposed to make it a little more reader-friendly.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from our first tab, General Fund? Hearing none, we will move to our second tab, which is the Executive Branch. Questions, comments regarding executive? Mr. Chambers?
Yes, I actually have probably about three and they're all going to probably be geared toward Lisa Thrash. There's Lisa in here somewhere. There she is, okay. This, and this, some of this is going to kind of go not just for the executive side, it probably can carry over to all the other departments. But Lisa, can you, can you tell me what are the different ways, number one, you can get a raise as an employee? What's the process and how employees or their pay is calculated? And I'm curious as to why did the benefits go up this year as far as insurance and 401K?
Yes, sir. I'll try to help with that. First of all... Hello?
Can you get it pulled up a little closer?
Hello?
Here comes Jose to the rescue.
Now? Testing?
That's better, thank you.
Okay. Okay. First of all, the Human Resources Department administers our structured job classification system. And that system is set up by categorizing the different jobs into groups based on similar duties, responsibilities, required knowledge and different levels of authorities. So the system is very rigid in that there's not a room, not a lot of room for flexibility in pay. The four ways that an employee or a position can receive additional or lower pay is a reclassification of the position, a promotion or demotion, a pay plan adjustment or a merit increase. Pay plan adjustments and merit increases are going to be approved through council budgeting. Reclassifications are going to go through a process that's normally when a position is indefinitely and materially changed and we need to look at how we can better place that position on a pay plan. So those are the ways that the pay can change. For budgeting purposes, our department starts with the position's pay as of the last day of the current fiscal year. So when you're looking at the salaries and wages in the budget, it should reflect the employee or the position's pay the last day of the current fiscal year. Then there's a separate line item that includes a merit increase and another line item that includes any kind of pay adjustment if there's one proposed. This particular budget has all of those things. So when you're calculating an employee or position's pay, you're going to look at three different numbers to get the total for that employee for the upcoming fiscal year. That's how the proposed budget is formulated. There are a few departments that have additional pay in, plus the ones I've already told you about. That would be such as the Fire Department. Firefighters work a 24/48 hour shift. Any hours over 106 in that 14-day pay period is overtime. So when you're looking at the classification plan and you look at the pay plan, if you have a firefighter who's at grade 16, step three on the pay plan, they're going to be at $51,694. But for budgeting purposes, we're going to have to include that additional overtime pay that we normally budget for the position. So we're going to take that firefighter's pay instead of 2,080 hours, which was what we normally use for an eight-hour employee, they're going to have more hours. They're going to have 2,724 hours of regular pay and 196 hours of overtime. And that gives us their annual base pay. In addition to that, we add 11 holidays, typically the number of holidays that we have, at 24 hours because that's what a firefighter works. So there's an additional column on their budget to include holiday pay. And also, if they meet the requirements for the education incentive, there's also an additional line which shows their education incentive. All of those things together roll up to make an employee's pay rate or the pay that you see in the budget. The Police Department works in a similar way. They have shift differentials. They have the holiday pay because they're 24/7 departments. And they also have the education incentives. Shift differentials for second and third shift, it's an additional 90 cents for second, an additional $1 an hour for third. All of that is rolled together to calculate their overtime rate as well. All of those wages are subject to overtime. And finally, the Wastewater Department is another non-typical department. They work seven-on, seven-off shifts, so their overtime has to be calculated differently. This is for the plant operators. The plant operators, we calculate 1,976 hours of regular time and 208 hours of overtime for wastewater plant operators. They also have the holiday pay calculated separately. So the changes to this budget that we're requesting in the mayor's proposed budget for this year are the reclassification of a facilities maintenance supervisor, the reclassification of a wastewater collection system supervisor, the reclassification of the city clerk, the reclassification of the judicial chief magistrate, a new position adding another building services worker or custodian, and of course, the 3% pay plan adjustment and the merit increase that I've already mentioned. As far as benefits, we're recommending increasing the group health fund by $1,000 per employee. We were, I don't have that number, but Daniel, what was our overall healthcare costs last year?
Overall cost or per employee?
Oh, I know the overall per employee. I meant the costs. We had tremendous...
We were probably about $800,000 short. And we don't know the final number because we still have bills coming in that'll be paid after the fiscal year end. But we supplemented the group health fund two different stints, one $300,000, one $500,000 for eight total.
So for those reasons, we're recommending increasing the city's funding by $100 per employee and that takes it from $11,000 per employee to $12,000 per employee. And increasing the employees' payroll deductions as well. An individual employee would be increased by $3 a month. A two-person plan would increase by $24 a month. And a family plan would increase by $40 a month. And those were carefully calculated because we have a very large number of lives on our plan now, larger than we've ever had, because as you grow, of course, you're adding more lives to your plan and they're multiplying. So as far as the RSA side, I believe that was your other question, Counselor Chambers? Each year RSA performs an actuarial and gives us the rates for the upcoming year. This year, the Tier One rates with RSA increased from 14.3% to 15.31%. The employees will still participate at 5 and 6%. And the Tier One B, which is the employees who were hired after January of 2013 but are eligible to retire at 25 years, we call them Tier One B, that rate is going up from 12.49% to 13.45%. And the employees' participation is at 7.5 and 8.5%. Did that answer your questions?
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else for me?
Other counselors have questions under our Executive tab. Mr. Jackson, go ahead. Okay, Mr. Whaley, we'll go first.
Mayor, I'm just, I'm just wondering. So I realize a webmaster is in your department. It's, so we have website funds budgeted under the department and the note says that is for some additional upgrades that have to be done because of a code that requires us to do that. But we also have around $11,000 for website things in the IT department. Is, I'm just wondering to try to clarify things. Is there, I know certain things are in departments for a reason, but if we, if we have some of the website funds under the Executive Department, some of the website funds under IT department, it makes it difficult when you're going through here to try to figure out, is there a way to consolidate? Just, just a question. And, and you may not be able to answer that right now. It's just, it's just easier in reviewing the budget if we had it all in one location.
I can see a little bit what you're talking about and I guess since I've seen more of it in action, and again, you're right, I don't know all the ins and outs of every bit and pieces of this, but I know we do have a great IT department. Our webmaster is doing excellent, but there are some cases that we have to use a third party, such as BWS for one example. They have to control certain areas of that. There's some other things inside the IT department that's actually connected with some of our public safety. So there's a lot of interconnectivity with all of our various departments. And there are some ADA-type requirements too that they have to make certain that we're, we're in compliance with.
Right. And I get that. It's just that, like, the website hosting and some of those things are budgeted in IT, but then some of the increase to cover VPAT for accessibility compliance and, and website updating and continued maintenance is in Executive. It, I was just, it's, to, to determine the total amount that we spend or we budget for the website, you've got to look in a lot of different places where, and this is just my opinion, it would be easier if I looked in the IT department and I saw, like we do with our software, and this year we, we consolidated a lot of the cameras into IT so that you're not having cameras in this department, cameras in that department, cameras in that department, and IT's having to, you know? It's just a consolidation factor of it. I'm not saying the, the person themselves, doesn't matter where we plug them in, it's just we got website updates and upgrades budgeted here, but we got website hosting budgeted there. It's, it's just, just a, just a suggestion to try to clear some of that.
And I could see some of what you're talking about there, but one thing, for example, when you talk about the different cameras, one of the big differences or importance there is make certain they're going through our IT department and even some of the other devices that are connected to our, to our website or internet, how important it is for them to be tested and trusted that they cannot be invaded by a third-party outside because the last thing we need is...
No, I, and I agree. There, that saves, that saves another question that I had in another department where we were talking about software. Most all the software is in the, and I'm, and I'm jumping to another department, but I'm just talking about software, is engineering has some software budgeted this next year when most all of our software is in IT? So it, it's important for me, if I'm asked to hear, if I'm asked to sponsor resolution to, to, for a new software or an additional software or a piece of software that is going to be utilized by another department, that we receive some kind of signature authorization or something that that's been reviewed by the IT department and it is compatible and it is safe to be put on our system, you know? And, and I feel like that all software should be budgeted and handled under the IT department.
Well, the one piece you're talking about with our engineering is not really a software. I think it's might be written up that way. It's more of an app and it's actually going to be put on the phone. And it can be actually, that phone or that app can be put on everything from garbage trucks that can ride around because a, a big part of that was the fact that with this program, it would pick up on street signs, potholes, basically grading of the street in, in theory. Now, once we get it and see how it actually operates here in Prattville, Alabama, it might be the money, best money we've ever spent, we might move on to the next project. But it has been tested in other areas. But, so that, I see what, exactly what you're saying, but in that particular case, it's, it's more of a, like I say, an app than, than software.
And I get that. And I know from having apps, when I was an employee with the city, we have an app hosting service in IT that, that puts all of our apps into one location to ensure that my city-issued cellphone wasn't infected by a corrupt app. That's, that's the only reason for bringing it up. But we're outside of Executive now, so...
And in our department head meetings, and, and I have to give Jose a lot of credit. He's brought our IT department a long ways from where it was. I think you and some other folks can remember when IT was in the basement of our City Hall annex. And I know that was one of the first moves that I had to make was get them out of the basement, get them up at least to the next level, which was drier. And then since then, it's been moved around and we're still going through a lot of changes as we think we all, I think we all know, we're going through a changing world. And IT is, is changing every, every day.
Oh, yeah. It's becoming a lot more prevalent and a lot more relevant to our day-to-day operations.
Which, one thing about the webmaster though, as well, since that's in the Executive Branch here, she actually works with all the departments because we're trying to promote them as much as, as possible, whether it's wastewater or, of course, police and fire have a great website of their own. So, but, so we're working a lot with, she's working a lot with engineering, streets and, and our wastewater, but then also with economic development as well because there's a lot of programs sometimes when you're building promotional packages to give to a potential partner Prattville coming into town, it's so important to have a very great professional-looking presentation. So if we were to try to break all these pieces out and try to figure out what she does for, for wastewater one year or, or another, it would take, might take another employee?
Another team of employees, but we, we do cover that breakout in the overhead allocation. So we, we are assigning a portion of the Executive Department to the outside of the General Fund Departments, which would be sanitation and wastewater.
Okay. I was just clearly stating that it's easier because it is, it's, it says here it's budgeted for updating and continued maintenance of the website, so...
And that, and just to piggyback a little bit, that kind of falls in line with who's going to pay it. So, and who's facilitating the process. So our webmaster facilitates that portion of the process, whereas our IT director facilitates and pays for other portions of the, of the website through a local entity that we use.
And to piggyback off of that, in, in the Executive Branch, on page seven, last three numbers are 170, it says insurance. And it says, and those are actually for non-departmental insurance. Some example of that might be, and I don't know if everybody here realizes it or not, but the City of Prattville owns the DHR building and the library insurance is out of part of that. The Head Start Building is out of that. So even though it's in the Executive Branch, it really on one hand doesn't have anything to do with the Executive Branch per se, but it's important to have it listed in here somewhere and, but all of the, keeping that insurance is very, very important. But that's just some of the, some of the different examples and we're always looking to better the wheel as much as we possibly can, but we'll take all those suggestions at heart and see, see how we can improve our, our processes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, quick question. Daniel, I know he mentioned the website and I think last year we had $12,000 budget for the website. This year it's $19,000. Any idea of how much we spent last year? And I see we have, there's like a $7,000 increase.
Not offhand. I'd have to research and see how much we spent directly on the website.
Okay. And I say that, and I'm, I don't really want to go down this lane right now just because I wanted to talk about it later, but I was just talking to some other entities about how they conduct their work sessions or whatever, but they were asking me, said, "Do we have a line item, itemized budget where we see how everything was spent in the previous years and what they're planning on purchasing for the upcoming year?" And I told them, "No." But I...
You're talking about like a trend analysis of historical data?
Yeah.
Yeah, that can be provided, yeah. We, we have the ability in this system to run that report. We keep a spreadsheet. That's how we determine a lot of the revenue line item budget amounts. And the department heads use those as well when they formulate their budget requests that come to us. And, but yeah, that, that data, now, when we go to the new system, it will be more difficult because we're starting over. But yeah, that data is available.
Yeah, because I would kind of like to see it, because like I say, I see where last year we spent $12,000 for the website. This year we're looking at $19,000. So I would like to see how much and what we spent it on last year so we'll have an idea, you know, when those questions come up, we know what it was for. And also, I was looking here, I know city promotional items here, it says $10,000, but then I see where we have the, we have like t-shirts and different things like that. Are those not considered promotional items or are they, how do we differentiate what's promotional and what's not? Any idea on that?
I'd have to look and see what all goes under that. All of this gets roped under one advertising and public relations general ledger account, so I'd have to pull out each piece and see what was considered what.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out what's considered city promotional items. I see where we spent the $10,000 there for that. Then we have t-shirts, medals, and I was just trying to see if that's something different.
So it does mention in the notes that the promotional items are used for marketing at various city events. Beyond that, I'd have to dig to see what that entails.
Any other counselors have questions under Executive? Mr. Merrick?
Yes, ma'am. And it's in regards to the, I looked that there's most of a, there's a lot of merit increases and all, but I was looking over on the administrative assistant, there's a decrease of about $8,000 on the salary. So I didn't know if that, is that a typographical error or is there a reason for that?
Did you say increase or decrease?
It's a decrease of $8,000.
On the administrative assistant?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Thrash, I believe, is ready to address that.
And I, I should have asked that before Lisa. I apologize.
Yes, sir. Last year, at the time we were preparing the budget, we were under the belief that an FLSA law was going to change, so we over-budgeted that position to compensate for that possible change. That change did not pass, so we took the position back to the appropriate rate.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, and thank you on that one. Yeah, there was actually a lawsuit, I believe, in Texas, was it? Texas that because the previous federal administration were coming up with some mandates and so that was just the preparation on that one in case it did come about, unfortunately it did not. Okay.
Mr. Whaley?
Were, were any of the other positions under the same lawsuit?
There was a benchmark, a threshold that they had to meet with the other ones that were salary and not in my, not in my, not in the Executive Department. But I believe that there might have been two others around the city that fell under that?
Yes, sir.
Two, two others, so... I'll just stand up here for a while.
Other counselors have questions under Executive tab?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
All right. I've been asked by several constituents, here we see additional city attorney, $23,000 in miscellaneous legal services for $22,000. You mind explaining how that works? Because I wasn't able to explain to them what that was.
Well, again, with the, any budgets, you know, a budget is a roadmap and you have to use what you think is going to be coming up that might have to be, be spent on, on that one. So, but I'd be glad to get more information for you on that.
Yeah, no, no, no. They were just saying, I know that we have, I know we have...
Two city attorneys? Well, we actually have multiple attorneys.
Yeah. So I, yeah, so it just says additional city attorney here for $23,000. Then right above it, it says miscellaneous legal services. And I know once we get over into the city clerk, I'm not trying to jump ahead, where we have a city attorney listed here for...
Yes, sir.
One of them is...
Counselor Jackson, the one in the Executive Department is Rob Riddle.
Okay.
And then the one in the city clerk's department is Andrew Odom. And then that miscellaneous legal services, most all departments have some level of legal expense budgeted for things that come up that we don't anticipate.
Okay. That's, that's what I'm just trying to get some understanding because I've been questioned about it and I had no idea, so that makes sense.
Other questions under the Executive tab? All right, our next tab is Legislative. Who has questions or comments regarding the Legislative tab? This is us. You should know this part better than any.
Paula, do you think you're going to have enough money in there for training since we have several of us that need some training? Do you think you have enough budgeted for us?
Yes, sir. When they passed that new law, we went in and looked to see what the general number of hours each counselor would need for this year and we budgeted it based on what the league was saying their amounts would be. And then we... And then we added, um, making sure that we did for any conferences that people usually go to, we added money in there for multiple people to go to conferences.
Okay, and what about like EDAA, winter conferences, summer conferences? Because I know, I think typically that's been the finance committee. But, um, I think moving forward, I mean, some of us may be interested in learning more about economic development and things like that. So has that been factored in?
It was not factored in for every counselor to go to that, no, but it was for multiple counselors to go to those trainings, yes, sir.
Any other questions under the legislative tab? All right, our next tab is finance. Questions, comments under the finance section?
So Dan, I'm sorry. So Daniel, going back to your question, uh, to your response earlier about the legal services. So here you guys have $13,000 for legal services, so that goes back to some needs that you guys may have.
Yes, sir, um, and it could range from anything from, um, if we need to bring in an attorney that, to deal with a, you know, business that we're having trouble collecting with, um, you know, any review of financial related contracts or documents that we initiate. You know, we, we like to have our attorneys review those, um, just to make sure we're covered, and those expenses will be paid out of there, too.
Now, and you say that, would we use our in-house attorneys, or what do you bring in outside?
Really depends on the subject matter. The vast majority of it, um, goes through our in-house attorneys. Um, if it's bond related, I get our in-house and our, our bond representative to look at it, too.
Daniel, can you kind of give me a little breakdown of what trustee fees are?
Yes, sir, um, so trustee fees are annual fees that we have to pay to our trustee that we use for our debt and our long-term debt. Uh, we use Regions Bank, and they charge a, kind of a flat fee, um, for each piece of debt that they handle the debt payments for. So we pay the, we make our semi-annual debt payments to the trustee, and then they disperse it to the bondholders. And that's the fee for that.
Other counselors with questions regarding finance? Okay, moving on to the city clerk tab. Any questions or comments regarding the city clerk? Mr. Wiley?
Um, this may actually be, again, for Ms. Thresh, just for clarification. So, and it's gonna, and I'll go ahead and, and say both of them, actually. We talked about the, um, the two reclassifications for department directors, which is in the, um, city clerk department and in the judicial department. So, and, and I, I brought this up last year because, um, I know it's a city policy and it's how we operate. But when we reclassify a, an employee and they go up in a pay grade and under a reclassification, um, we have a certain percentage and we start them at step one, basically. But if we go out and hire somebody that we bring in into that, a particular pay grade that's in, or a position that's in the same pay grade, we have the ability to negotiate so that we can get a salary that's acceptable for that person to come to work for us. And I'm, I'm not saying there's an answer for it, I'm just saying that, in my opinion, we have two employees who really could retire. I mean, to, to be honest, and they were reclassified, um, and I just wanna make sure that everything we do is fair. I know there's a policy, um, but I brought this up last year when the fire chief was reclassified from deputy fire chief to fire chief. And, um, it was at a, what I felt was a lower rate than what we were bringing in, uh, somebody into the city. So we take an 18-year employee, reclassify them, they go into step one. We hire a, you know, in, in that particular case, our engineer retired. We go in, we, we find an engineer, and they have the ability to negotiate beyond step one because that's what it's gonna take for us to bring them in. I'm just, I'm just thinking, I'm just trying to make sure that we're being fair to all of our employees and that we're putting them in where they should be, um, and not holding them to a, a lower rate just because it's a reclassification.
And at this time, the tools we have available to help us with that problem are, during the merit process, we can often make adjustments. We can do a two-step merit if it's warranted. And that is the tool that we have used in the past to help us bring those department heads in the situation like you described up to par, or up to the level of their, of their other coworkers. Um, normally when there's a reclassification or a promotion, it's 5%, a minimum of 5%. So you take the employee's pay from the grade and the step that they're at, you increase it 5% and go to the next highest step. And in this particular case, these two employees were at a grade 23. They moved to a grade 25. There's 10% between each grades. So it was automatically 20% between those grades. So when you move two grades, you're a little bit limited on, on the flexibility that we have to do that. Of course, the council can direct us to do something different if that's, if that's what you'd like to do. But those policies that we have, those are the tools that we have available for pay at this time.
Right, and, and I understand, I just, and, and it may be something that we wanna look at later, um, because we, you know. So, so we have the ability to adjust that with additional step raises in the future, so.
If warranted, yes.
So, um, do we have department head positions that are budgeted for additional steps this year?
We do.
Okay. And, and I, you know, and I, and it, and I made the, I guess, the observation or, or the, the argument, line, not argument. But I stated the case last year that I felt, um, that the head magistrate was, in my opinion, definitely running a department and should have been in, budgeted in a department head position, um, as well as the, the city clerk position. You know, and if we had made some changes last year, then, um, that may have benefited them some this year. But, um, we have the policies that we have, so it may be that we need to look into those. And then potentially look at, um, you know, for these two reclassifications, uh, a potential additional step, if it's warranted, so.
Yes, sir, I agree, and, and we will continue to research that and see if we can find a better solution that we can present to you all.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments under city clerk? Okay, our next tab is under human resources. Questions or comments from counselors regarding human resources? Which we've kind of been covering all along. Mr. Chambers?
Yeah, I just got a question for Lisa. I think I have an understanding of this, but I just wonder, you're possibly up here, too. Vacation repurchase program, can you give me a little bit more insight to what is involved there, please?
Oh, I may save some steps. Um, so the vacation repurchase program, we have had that in place maybe four or five years now. Um, it's a, an added benefit that we've offered to the city employees, and there's some structure to it whereby it allows you to buy back some of your unused vacation time if you have accumulated over a certain threshold at a point in time. So at the point, we typically do it around the holidays, um, November, um, because, you know, a lot of employees would like to use it for their holiday shopping. And we budget that as salaries and the applicable FICA that goes to the federal government. Um, but if you have a minimum of 80 hours built, you can't go under 80 hours after you buy back. And you have a maximum of 80 hours that you can buy, maximum of 80, yeah. Maximum of 80 hours that you can buy in a minimum of eight hours. So between eight and 80 hours, if you have at least 80 hours, if that makes sense. Um, and it's just a, uh, something that we, we found and we're able to offer to the employees. We've continued to be able to find funding for it each year. Uh, last year, I think we spent 150,000, um, one year was 120, one year was 80 something. So it, it varies, but, um, I think a lot of employees really enjoy having that option.
Okay, thanks, Daniel.
Other counselors with questions under HR? All right, moving along, our next tab is IT. Counselors with questions or comments for IT?
I've got one.
Mr. Chambers?
Jose, I know you're not feeling that well, but, thank you. Um, one of the questions I have, um, see if you can give me some clarification and, and an understanding on where it says, uh, internet service provider, so we went up from last year, I think it says 267 to 303. Uh, can you give me a little more insight as to why that is?
Yes, part of that is we've added sites, so a lot of the, the sites that we've added are park bathrooms, we have access controls, automatic locks, cameras, that kind of nature, that requires internet. So we have, we work off the state contract with AT&amp;T through the state of Alabama. It's about 475, 475 per month per internet circuit that we buy from them, uh, is the average cost at most of our sites. And then we also had some inflated costs because we are in the process of moving the server rooms. So it's accounting for the additional sites that not only have been built, but are planning to be built, uh, throughout the next budget year. And just making sure that we're staying balanced.
Okay, thank you.
Any else, before I walk back?
Other counselors with questions for Jose?
It's, it's not, I have a question, but it's not for everyone.
Okay, thank you, Jose.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Wiley?
So, Daniel, just for clarification, um, so bank elevator remodel? I get it, it's the building that IT's in. But there again, just, just for clarification, when you start looking at facility maintenance projects for facilities, you, you gotta go through all the different places to look at them. Um, I, I realize that that is in the building that they're in, but, you know, if you go to facility maintenance, um, you have money budgeted for HVAC maintenance, and that's for everybody. So it, it just makes, to me, it's easier to find facility-related items if they're under facility maintenance.
And I guess in this instance, um, the IT director was the one who got the quotes for that work and will be responsible, not entirely for overseeing, if so, the maintenance will also be responsible, so it's a joint effort. It is very difficult to start peeling the layers back on the onion and getting it back together. So, I mean, we, we can move it to facility maintenance if we'd like, if you guys would like to. I, I don't care.
I, I don't necessarily, I'm not saying we have to move it. I'm just saying that, as we, as I'm looking through here and I wanna, I wanna find how much it costs to maintain the facilities that we have. Because some of them are aging, and we have spent a lot of money to revitalize a lot of our facilities. Um, we're sitting in one, and, and, and it's, it's money well spent. But if I wanted to go through and determine where we are as far as maintaining our facilities, uh, as an overall picture, I've gotta go through the entire budget and look for all the different, that's, that's my only point, is it would, in, if, you know, facility maintenance, I realize that some of that is farmed out to other budgets, maybe? Like if it's a facility, an enterprise fund facility, then that money's gonna have to, to come from the enterprise fund. And I'm not trying to create an accounting nightmare for you to have to move from one fund to the other.
No, and it's.
It's just easier, it's, it would just, to me, would be easier if it was to maintain a facility if it was under facilities maintenance, I'm wrong.
And we do have building maintenance accounts in several different departments, and it really kind of depends on how we set them up. So the public safety building, for instance, you know, building maintenance, you know, if there's an issue there, we, you know, now that IT is gone, we typically just split it 50/50, doesn't matter, you know, what side it's on, because if it affects the whole building, it affects both departments. This building here, utilities, so we have, you know, a handful of different departments in this building, but finance pays for all utilities. We don't split it out, um, that's just an extra step we'd have to go through. So in, in certain things, I guess we do split out, historically, that's just kind of how it's evolved. So if there's an appetite of the council to do it a little differently, we can certainly look at that. And we can, you know, we don't wanna adjust how we pay for it and account for it if it's gonna become more problematic and not be worth very much, but we're absolutely happy to, you know, consolidate things if it makes it easier on you guys to be able to tell what you're, what you're looking for.
Okay, just, just pointing it out, just.
And also on this one, I'd like to bring up that, uh, it will also have a lockout, so you can only go, uh, probably the general public to the second floor. If you wanna go to the third floor, then you'll have to have a key fob, and so there was some IT technology involved on that one, so.
Further questions regarding IT? Hearing none, our next tab is vehicle maintenance. Do any counselors have any questions or comments regarding vehicle maintenance? Mr. Wiley?
I'm sorry, Daniel. Just as an overall, I'm not asking for specific numbers. I know vehicle maintenance is not what it used to be. I understand the, the issues with, um, recruiting and retention of, 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 um, qualified employees to, to run the gamut of the different styles of equipment and things that we have. I, I've noticed in, um, some of the other departments, fire and, um, police, that we're outsourcing a lot of our regular vehicle maintenance. Is, are we seeing, are we seeing it trend to where it is more beneficial for us to outsource that than to provide it ourself?
I think that probably is best answered by each individual department, but I'll, I'll tell you what I know. Um, it, it really depends. Police likes to keep their guys, they want the 15-minute oil change, not the, not the, you gotta schedule it with our vehicle maintenance, and they, they want their guys to stay on the street. Um, fire department, uh, those, the big trucks are complex, and I, I guess just, I don't have this, the background knowledge and skillset, I guess, to, to work on those. Sanitation is very similar. You've gotta take those big trucks down to Kenworth or to Raymer or to Ingram, and, you know, or we bring Ingram to us, um, through sanitation. So, you know, I don't, I don't know the ins and outs of how to, you know, fix a car, so. But I, I have no problem with our department taking our vehicles over to facility maintenance, I mean, vehicle maintenance, excuse me, because they can handle everything that we need, but ours are pretty simple. So beyond that, I, I don't know how to answer that.
Yeah, and, and I'm just, I, I'm not, you, you and I have been through vehicle maintenance.
Yes, yes, your special assignment, and I spent some, a lot of time down there.
I fully understand the challenges with recruitment and retention of, of, um, well, I understand, I understand the challenges of recruitment of someone who can specialize in multiple different vehicles and types of equipment. It's almost impossible, I, and I understand that. I, I'm just, I wanna make sure that we are watching that so that overall, if it trend, because, I mean, the cost of maintenance is going up. I work for a company that has three, um, fire truck maintenance locations. And I know that the cost of large vehicle maintenance is, is, is going up tremendously. So are we ensuring, I guess my only question is, are we ensuring that, like, we get to a. So are we ensuring, I guess my only question is, are we ensuring that, like, we get to a point where it's costing more to send it out than it would be if we tried to, to maintain people who had the experience to do that? Um, you know, and I'm not saying that would happen in five years or ten years. I'm just saying, are we, are we, are we tracking it to where we know that, hey, we can't get the people to do this, so we've gotta outsource it? Or if it becomes, you know, I mean, if we look and, and apparatus maintenance becomes forty percent of the fire department's budget?
Well, I'll, I'll say this, um, we've become a lot more mechanized, even when you were on special assignment, uh, here and everything, um, than what we were then and so much more. And that has become, well, probably one of the first things, twenty years ago, if you went out to a vehicle, you probably took a screwdriver and a wrench. And now the first thing you're probably gonna take is a, is a iPad or laptop. So I mean, it's, you gotta find that special skill technique, uh, that so many technicians, if they have that, they're probably in business for themselves or working for a, a big company like yours or some other ones that, um, know all the ins and outs. But I will say this, the department heads are staying on top of trying to rotate the vehicles out just as much as possible on a regular basis. So that way we can turn them in and get a lot more of return on those. Because as you well know, there's a lot of taxes we don't have to pay because we're a municipality. But we still, um, a lot of our vehicles still have to have the DEF fluid. Where I think some of the militaries don't, so they have a little bit of an advantage over that. But, um, and I'd say our department heads are watching over that very, very closely. And one thing that we have done, um, since you brought up about, uh, the, uh, fire trucks, is that, um, we're taking some of our ambulance fees co, collections and using those to pay, pay off on our fire trucks. So, but, um, but yes, our department heads are watching that very, very closely as, as well as I am. And hopefully, um, as we move into the next squadronium, whoever sits on the various committees there will actually be able to pick up on that as well, too.
Okay, good deal, thank you.
Okay.
And I know Oakley, Daniel, you mentioned that, that may be something that we talk to some of the department heads. And I see some of them are here. And so hopefully, uh, maybe later on, you guys can give us an update on what types of trends you're finding. That would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, there, we've had a lot of issues with sanitation repairs. Um, Tracy has been in our office, um, a lot with concerns over that. And, and even what we're outsourcing, I'm not talking about an internal. Um, and we've, you know, we've, we have talked about, he got numbers he's run, we've looked at him. We haven't met that threshold probably yet, but that doesn't mean we won't meet it soon, um, in order, cause it is a problem. And I, I know especially with Tracy's, um, trucks, because they are constantly, constantly having issues.
Yeah, I'd like to have, uh, you know, analysis of, if we could combine something like the fire side and the sanitation side in that realm of somebody that can work on the, the big trucks like that. If there's some crossover right there that they could potentially have one or two guys when one, either one of those trucks go down, rather than necessarily outsourcing it when they need it right then and waiting on somebody to get it done. I know time is money and, and I know if somebody like Tracy's gonna get the phone call that afternoon if that trash is not picked up and he's trying to come up with another way to get that picked up. So I'd like to look into something like that myself.
Further thoughts on vehicle maintenance? All right, on to the next tab, which is debt service, debt service. Okay, engineering is next.
I've got two or three for you, buddy. Okay.
I, I will start by saying that we have quite a few increases in our budget just sin, simply due to, um, inflation, material cost increase. Um, and then also trying to take more of a proactive approach. So I know there's a lot of increases in my budget.
All right, yep, that's kinda where I'm going with it. Um, I'll just kinda hit on each one of these. Maybe you can kinda just give me a quick, uh, rundown or us a quick rundown. Operating supplies increased from about twenty to fifty thousand. Maybe you could give me a breakdown on that. Sign material, forty-five to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And then your storm water, uh, went from eighty-two to two hundred and sixty-five plus thousand.
That's right. So operating supplies, that pays for things, um, kinda like it says, just to, to be able to operate. Majority of that comes from Robert Roder, who's fantastic at what he does. He came over from, help me on that, um, Public Works, that was before my time, um, but didn't really come with any funds. So he does exceptional job helping other departments, um, with various things. So some of that increase is due to trying to incorporate him now being in our department. Um, sign materials, let me know if I skip any. Um, sign materials, when you look at it, we really had about a ten thousand dollars increase from forty-five thousand to fifty-five thousand this year. Um, again, that's just due to, to things costing more. The sixty thousand dollars, that's to hopefully purchase somewhere around fourteen radar signs that we can put up to help with speed studies and also traffic calming. Going to storm water, uh, storm water increases is mainly due to, um, just trying to keep up with the times. To give you an example, um, my goal is to try to replace pipes or line pipes ahead of paving projects as needed to save money. We have a lot of metal pipes in the city that, um, are going to fail. It's not if they fail, it's when they fail. To give you an example, Northington Road, we're getting ready to pave it. And there's six or seven, um, corrugated metal pipes that cross Northington Road. We got a price just out of curiosity to see what it would be to line those six or seven pipes. And it was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that increase in that line item is really just to keep up with the times and the increase, um, cost of what it takes to do some of this work. Any others in specific?
Yeah, one more, I guess I'm noticing here in my notes, uh, the traffic marking and, and calming supplies. If I'm reading this right, you went from fifty to two hundred.
That's right. Um, majority of that increase is due to, um, we have a process where if anybody wants to request traffic calming, um, they can go through that process, but there was not really any significant funds available to install anything. To give you an example, um, we call them a, a speed table. Typically, we'd want those in concrete. That's gonna be about twenty to thirty thousand dollars a pop just to put in one speed table, depending on where it's located. By the time you do the, the speed table out of concrete, plus the signage, plus the markings, um, those things can get quite expensive. Yeah, speed tables gonna probably cost you anywhere from twenty to, to thirty thousand dollars. I mean, concrete, uh, and, and this goes into a lot of, um, our increase, just to give you an example. I mean, concrete sidewalk we used to could get installed for forty-five dollars a square yard. Now you're lucky if you get it for eighty, eighty-five. So price of concrete has just gone way up. Um, getting people to pour concrete are come, becoming very difficult to find. So of course their pricing has gone up. Um, it, it costs quite a bit of money to do that type work.
When you refer to speed tables, is that like the two walking, crosswalks over at Pratt Park?
That's correct, that's correct. That's right. What we have over here by Pratt Park, um, twenty, twenty to thirty is, is kinda, again, it depends on the area. Uh, you gotta think, you, you've gotta cut out the asphalt, you've got to, by the time you pour the concrete, it, it's not, I mean, you gotta shut the road down to be able to do it. It, it's not cheap. Right, right, right. That, that, that's why you may have seen me be a little hesitant on recommending any, any speed tables. Um, we, you can do a cheaper option of, of going in and putting in a, a rubber speed table, but I don't recommend those just because you, you damage your asphalt. Um, it's just not a long-term solution in my opinion. That's why you see over by Pratt Park and McGray that those are done out of concrete.
I know I have about ten locations that people are always asking, can you do something about it and, you know?
Right, yeah.
So if we were to do that now, I'm looking, you're talking about two hundred and fifty thousand right there.
Oh, yeah, I mean-
If we were to look at those locations.
It can add up, add up quickly. I mean, you'll see, um, some of our, our traffic markings, same thing on the same light item. Um, my, my goal would be that we start to implement stop bars, which is just the white bar on the roadway at all stop locations. We're trying to implement that with our paving project. But if you go through doing one at every single stop sign, it's, it's pretty expensive. So some of this increase is to try to do those things as we go, take a more proactive approach. Um, we, we've gotta start somewhere and, and this is my way of, of starting, saying, okay, let's try to implement some of these improvements.
Let me use that as a segue. Um, gotta start somewhere and one way we're trying to improve a lot of our traffic calming. Don't go too far, cause I need you to explain some. But, um, uh, radar signs, I've talked with several of the counselors about trying to get some new radar signs. Uh, how many did this purchase?
This, this would be roughly fourteen, um, when, that, we got a quote on these about three or four months ago.
And the rationale behind that is you have seven districts, need to be able to pick up speed. Cause these will pick up information, data as far as the, the date, the time, the speed. And so basically, don't know if they're gonna be numbered D-one all the way through times two. But, uh, some of the mindset is, if you have a speeding situation in your district, you can call up and, you know, this is in engineering, you know, maybe discussion needs to have. Do we need to have it in the police department? But they do have to work together on, on all of this, but it has to be put out there. But that is some of the, the thought process on that. And one other one I wanted to touch base with just a little bit here, if I could. Um, on page twenty-four, um, for next year, it says, it's just below, in between one fifty-nine and one sixty, if you're looking at the category numbers. Says add thirty thousand for dam maintenance. Um, some of that, I think in a long-term way for the city of travel. We need to be looking at our bridges and dams, especially the dam we have over here, to start putting monies aside, cause eventually we are gonna have to have some significant road, bridge, bridge, uh, maintenance. And then also eventually our dam is gonna need to be refurbished. So if we start, um, what did AG Carter used to call it? Pitch? Ratness, okay, all of those pigeon holding, but, um, anyway, we gotta start putting some of us, uh, beside because if not, it's gonna sneak up on us before we even know it. Cause we do have a lot of needs in, in some of our dams and levees and, and the mill pond as well. Cause I think in the very near future, we need to have a long-range maintenance plan for maintenance of our mill pond, cause it's in need of some as well, so.
I, I put our dam in the same situation as a lot of our corrugated metal pipes in, in the city. And unfortunately, um, that was used quite a bit fifty, sixty years ago in, in metal rust. But, um, the dam, it, it's not a matter of if we're going to have issues, it's when. So, um, I think that's a very good point in that we, we definitely need to be proactive in, in planning for that because it's just a matter of time before we're facing those challenges. We, we already faced some that luckily our guys are, do excellent what they do and able to make repairs as needed. But, um, some of them, we, we're starting to see that, that they're gonna start adding up over time.
Are you finished, Mr. Chambers? Okay, Mr. Whaley?
Um, so you brought it up. I, I was, my suggestion was going to be, um, for next year, I appreciate you looking at forecasting what we can expect to see next year. Uh, if I'm right, it's somewhere around six hundred thousand dollars increase. Um, I'm not sure where that's coming from, but, um, I would say, that wasn't a, that was rhetorical. But I would say, um, I agree with putting some money in there for dam maintenance. But you know, we, we have a, a bridge that we maintain or we're responsible to maintain in District Five that we've looked at. Um, I, you know, whether you combine the two or whether you put something in there where we start to, to, uh, have money for bridges, because we have several bridges throughout the city that we are responsible for maintaining. Um, and it, and there again, it's not, um, if, it's when we start to have issues. I, I don't want us to be with no funds available and have to go and go into more debt to, to make a major repair on a bridge.
Well, and, and one thing I will note too, to your earlier point, Mayor's, so we have right at two hundred and fifty miles of roadway within the city that we maintain. Um, the new, and, and we probably should not have used the term software. We should have used the term application, um, to, to help grow our roadways. Is that, you know, there's gonna be a lot coming and, and hopefully that that application, that software, I'll use that term just because I think it's easier to understand. Um, will help highlight some of those areas that we need to really focus on. Same, same thing with our bridges. Um, we, we've got several bridges that, like you say, over, over time, something's gonna have to be done with.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kinda, I'm sorry, like, you kinda touched on the streets. You know, we always get that list. This is, this, this, the paving project, so to speak. Maybe we could do something similar to that. We know which, which bridges are on the project list.
Well, and, and I, and I don't wanna stand up here and, and make any false promises, but one thing that we will try to implement with the new, um, again, I'm gonna call it software just cause that's what we called it in the beginning, but try to develop more of a, a five-year paving plan as opposed to coming to, hey, it's time to pave some streets. What streets are we paving? Have, have more of a five-year paving plan. That way, same thing with our storm water, we know where we're going. So two years ahead of knowing we're gonna resurface the street, we can start looking at storm water pipes and things like that. Um, and, and just do it as it goes. Ho, hopefully have a little bit more proactive approach, but of course that takes funds to be able to do that type work.
And I'm gonna use that as, uh, how important is the one penny? Maybe this is for you and Daniel. How important is the one penny to these projects?
Yeah, it's vitally important. Um, uh, infrastructure is not a bucket that we're gonna have problems finding ways to spend.
Well, and, and, and to my earlier point, I wrote down a few numbers here. I mean, you know, things have not gotten any less expensive. Um, when it comes to infrastructure construction, cost has just significantly gone up over the years. Um, I mean, pipe, storm drainage pipe we used to could, could install for forty, fifty dollars a foot. Now if we get it less than a hundred and twenty dollars a foot, we're doing really good. So the, the cost of this work is just gonna continue to go up. Unfortunately, we, we have an impact on that too. Um, Councilman Whaley, you know, trying to, to hire people internally is difficult, but also contractors are having the same struggles, so their prices means going up. Um, so to your point, I think that one cent going towards infrastructure is, is very critical. Not only from the standpoint that we've got two hundred and fifty miles of roadway that we maintain, multiple bridges, twenty-something traffic signals. But, but also trying to, to find the funds to be able to do it. Um, cost is just continuing to go up and I don't see that stopping anytime soon in the, the construction industry.
If you don't mind, explain to them how we're looking at a, a third party to do several areas to, to have an analysis done for like between Wetumpka Street and, uh, Main Street, uh, a portion in District One. Uh, I think there's a big project in District Two that needs to be looked at. Um, several of the districts have those that, uh, we've already identified.
You'll see under our miscellaneous contract services, um, fifty thousand, we have budgeted fifty thousand for what we're calling draining survey, drainage survey mapping. Um, that goes into what some of the mayor's referencing there. Um, I'll give hats off to, to Dale Gandy, um, Public Works. You know, they, uh, well before my time, but went through and, and mapped a lot of their sanitary sewer system and that has paid dividends, um, not only for the city, but the citizens as well. We want to try to do the same thing with our drainage infrastructure. And so using some of these third parties to look at some of our more critical areas, start there. Um, hopefully get a lot of that mapped out so we can start making more informed decisions on what are the next right steps.
Okay, I think the ones we've identified already, like I say, is over here between Main and Wetumpka and Main. Um, one in Sina Kills.
Yes, there, there, there's multiple. Um, E, Eastwood, um, out close to, to Target, behind Target, um, that's one that we're definitely looking at. Places that we know we have ongoing drainage issues. Um, a lot of that, you can't really just go out there and start, you know? If, if you got a street that you know needs paving, you can go say, okay, let's go pave the street. Drainage is more of, you gotta sort of study the area, take a look at where it's all going and, and generate some type of plan that you can work off of.
Yeah, I'm, so that's, uh, one of the things I was gonna bring up is the drainage survey map. So I'm, I'm glad that we're doing that.
Right.
My, my question is, um, well, I guess you do have next year for future piping projects. That may fall into that. I'm, I'm just thinking that once we get that, those things mapped out, we're going to- I'm, I'm just thinking that once we get that, those things mapped out, we're going to begin to find a lot of areas that are going to need some, some maintenance and improvement moving forward, so I'm not trying to add more to the budget for next year, but there's going to be uh an instance of some more though. You know, we, we, we've been in that, um, I, I guess that's the Pine Creek Water Basin that we went through and there's, I'm just thinking about um debris removal and stuff. There is so much stuff in there that thankfully we haven't had, you know, breaches and wastewater lines that cross those, because I mean, I'm, I'm, well, you were with me. There's whole trees that when the water comes up, it just, it floats them down through there, and eventually some of that stuff's got to be, got to be removed and, and remediated.
Well, and, and the reality too, that, that plays into some of this number is good, bad, or indifferent, we're beginning to see more frequent heavy rain events, um especially during the spring, early summer times of the year. You know, we've got a lot of areas in, in the city that we've looked at that say, well, hey, it's flooding here, there's a, there, there's got to be a pipe stopped up or something like that. In reality, there's no issue, it's just the amount of water that we're getting in some of these places at, at certain times that the infrastructure cannot withstand, which further plays into the, in my opinion, the importance of the one cent sales tax. Used to you could get by with an eighteen-inch pipe, now it may take a, a twenty-four, thirty-inch pipe, just simply due to some of the storm events we're now experiencing.
And I'll say this, and I know it's not going to be received well by some, and it might be received better by others. A lot of that is caused by the amount of development that we see. The amount of additional asphalt that we see and the uh reduction in um virgin land that's able to, to absorb a lot of that water. So if, if we're continuing to carry forward with that, then drainage has got to be one of the tops of our priorities.
Which, which I will.
It's only going to get worse.
And, and I will say on that note, just to make sure that everybody understands, and this is more of a, a hats off to, to Dale Gandy and Public Works. You know, we, we do require any development that, that develops more than one acre of land. They're having to put in detention ponds and things like that. So we have a process in place, not only the city of Praval, but it's pretty much industry standard at this point. Try to, try to reduce to make sure that we're not sending any more water than what was previously sent.
Yes, and that's by city ordinance with the MS four plan. I believe Dale can hopefully bring up a lot more light to that, but uh one thing about Praval though, because I think we all know, we've got some new areas, we've got some wide green areas, and we've got a lot of downtown areas that are really old, but we also have that certain type of soil con condition that uh some of it looks like clay, but has so much of a um sandy mixture to it that it erodes in it. And I've talked to some real experts and said it's not because of additional housing being built, it's just because of the uh the compost, I mean, the condition of the soil. So, we are the fountain city.
Any further questions on engineering? Our next tab is planning. Any counselors with questions or comments regarding planning? All right, Jonathan, Jonathan can let out his breath now, all right?
Yeah.
Urban management.
I'd like to say something about urban.
Okay, Tom.
I'd like to say something about urban management. So uh just to, for those that maybe at home that'll watch this or maybe not sure what all about urban management entitles, but uh, it's a division that consists of managing and maintaining the city's common areas, right-ofways, uh cemeteries and other green spaces by performing mowing, weeding, planting, irrigation and pruning. The division also provides support for special events, maintains storm easements, and performs uh mosquito control. Grounds and maintenance uh usually maintains of the, the grounds, including mo- like I said, mowing and re- uh right-ofway easements, maintaining curbs, sidewalks, drainage areas and storm easements throughout the day. And also it's a part of the uh public work. So again, um thank Dawn and also as well Dale Gandy for everything he'll do.
And I would like to add a couple more comments uh on that one as well. You know, we are looking to get as mechanized as possible and, and with A.I. and I guess some robotic type lawnmowers. We have one in operation right now over in our public safety building, and I know um Public Works, Urban Management is planning two more or so, which, and maybe even one in, in parks and wrecks, but uh we're trying to use all, all of those as, as force multipliers. No employees will lose their jobs because of these, these um new type of technology, but it'd be very, very important uh for us to keep up with a, a changing world and also be able to keep our, our costs down completely, but uh as, as much as possible. The um one thing I should have gotten up here a little bit earlier and talked about with planning, uh I'm still going to encourage that we come back and look at our twenty forty uh comprehensive master plan. Uh, it's been roughly about over five years. And also with our parks and wrecks, um tier projects, where their master plan. We need to be taking a good, long, hard look at that again to make certain that we're, we're up to date on all of those. So, thank you.
Facilities maintenance. Questions or comments regarding facilities maintenance tab? Mr. Jackson?
Ms. Thrash, we're, as far as facility maintenance and our workers there, um, facilities maintenance, urban management. How? How um? How are our employees pay compared to other municipalities of our size? Because I know we have a lot of guys that work really hard. Sometimes they may feel a little overlooked, but I just want an idea of how well they are compensated compared to the other municipalities of our sizes in urban management and facilities maintenance.
And that is a classification that we call a service maintenance worker, or in Parks and Rec, we call it a park maintenance worker. And compared to um the cities that were in our classification and compensation study in two thousand eighteen and two thousand, the review in two thousand twenty-three, we were a little bit above some of the cities of our size, and of course, we fell below a few of them. So we were pretty average. We tried to put in place, working with Dale and his team, we put in place some growth opportunities for them. So we start an employee as in a service maintenance worker one at grade ten, which is starting at thirty-six thousand. And then after one year of continuous employment in good standing with good performance evaluations, they can promote to a service maintenance worker two, which takes them up to thirty-eight thousand and gives them a little more life on the pay plan. Then we also have uh chemical and irrigation technicians that they are eligible to apply for when those openings come. If they have, receive the certifications, then they're eligible to promote for those type positions. And of course, we like to grow our own, so promoting to supervisor positions generally comes from those crews, and I can think of the last three that we've hired or had opportunities have come from service maintenance workers and moved up the ladder. Does that answer your question, sir? Thank you.
Further questions regarding facilities maintenance? Okay, our next tab is public works. Mr. Whaley?
Just one question um on that. So under professional services, we have uh stormwater monitoring. Is, in, is, is that going to be able with the money that we just talked about in engineering on the surveying map, are, are they going, is, are they going to, is that going to increase your ability to, to do your, your job in stormwater? Or is this outside stormwater services that we?
What, what was the exact lineup again?
Yeah, it was the stormwater monitoring is.
Okay, yeah, that goes in hand in hand with what he was talking about. And you know, we had talked about, we had done stormwater monitoring on Fay Branch.
Right.
We talked about that.
Right.
This is part of that. That's what that's used for is uh and on that. Next will probably be the Pine Creek Basin that we try to do a study on. And uh, yeah, and obviously it's a lot of money to get in and do things, but we actually have money budgeted this year also to, for some, some remediation uh of some of these basins.
Okay, good, because that, you know, which we, we've seen some of the issues with, I mean, we may not be able to, to do a whole lot about the erosion um that's caused from whatever it's caused from, but it, it is dropping trees and debris into that basin and they're collecting in very large piles.
Yes.
So that's, that's good. All right, thank you.
Further questions regarding public works while Mr. Gandy's still forward? Thank you, Mr. Gandy. This time we'll move into the tab on police. Any counselors have questions or comments regarding the police section?
Yeah, I just got one, Chief. I mean, just curious, how close are you to a hundred percent field as far as your positions? Just curious.
There's some retirements we've got coming up and we just had, we're at ninety-five, but we got some good recruits coming in, so we should, we could be at full staff by the middle of next year.
That's awesome. Awesome, thank you.
Further questions regarding police? Nobody wants to make him walk right back down?
Hey, I made him walk up here.
Double dog dare you, Michael Whaley.
You don't have to come back up here, Chief. I, we, we had this conversation, um animal control, I think we're okay with that now. We, we did move the feral cat control over to community initiatives. Um, when we get there, Mayor, I think that's probably a good starting point, but we've got a real issue with feral cat population in District Five. I don't know if everybody else does. But we have, we, we are becoming inundated with feral cat populations in District Five for sure. So I, I just, I, I talked with Chief about it, and I understand, we, I know we moved this, this program, and I know I talked with uh Mr. Odom, and he got a, a, a meeting set with a, a, a group that might be able to help us. I just want to make sure we've got enough in there for that and when we get to that tab.
Yes, sir.
And if not, are we going to be able to add to it and not two months into the budget year, if they say, yes, we will help you, then bam, we're out of money and we got to wait ten months before we can do anything else?
Don't worry, we uh, we're taking this in, in very serious, and I guess uh one of the things, one reason why I wanted to come up here when was initially talked about was, oh, well, how is this going to be perceived by the community? I think some of us thought that it's going to be looked upon as throwing monies away, but I think actually it's been really very, very well received, because a lot of times it's not those animals' faults, it's the fault of uh maybe a previous owner. And with the program that we have, and we will definitely keep the council informed, uh it started off at twenty-five hundred dollars uh a year. Now we're up to five and um we will keep you informed, because we, 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 we take this very serious, we need to make certain we keep this program moving forward.
Right, and I, and I will say going into this um next quadrant, I'm very quickly, I'm looking at some additions to ordinance for nuisance animals and, and control of nuisance animals. Because I've, I've, I have a lot of, well, I sent you all a bunch of emails. And, and everything we have in our ordinance deals with dogs, but our problem seems to be cats, so. But Andrew's provided some information and we're looking at, at, you know, moving forward with that in the very near future. Because they are out of control.
Well, I do appreciate the council's support on this, because like I mentioned earlier, uh when you initially, first time you put it in, you're always concerned, are we going to get a lot of pushback on it, because there are a lot of folks that really were not even thinking about feral cats, and, and I think this is a, a good way to, to try to handle the problem in the beginning. Because I, and I think a lot of it's going to have to be with third-party outsourcing a lot, because we do have one animal control person and um on staff. And uh, you know, with a problem like this, he doesn't know when eight to five is or when the weekends are. It's, it's always there and um we have to be able to serve our citizens just as quickly as possible. So volunteerism and third-party uh outsourcing, I think is going to be a real positive thing for this.
Anything, anything further with police tab? Following police is fire.
I have a couple. Chief Bingham? I guess I'll start with the same question. How close is your department to being one hundred percent uh filled?
So we are currently slated for ninety-six sworn firefighters, and we are standing at ninety-two right now.
Great.
So, yeah, great, great, great place to be.
So, and this may be you and or Lisa, I, I think she touched on it earlier. Question is um the education incentive pay, now that's still in effect, correct? It's just being reallocated to some way, form or fashion, as, as far as how they get paid?
Uh, it is, it is still in effect, yes. Do you want to speak to that? I hate to bring you back up here, but.
Because was that at one point separate tech, technically?
I think we just pointed it out the first year it started and then beyond, which has been three, this is the
This is the second year.
Second year. So we may have separated it last year, but this year we rolled it into each position's pay. So if you see a group of fire sergeants or firefighters or fire EMTs, if they have that education component, the two and a half percent, the five percent, or the seven and a half percent has been added to that base pay that's in the budget under salaries and wages.
The reason we had separated it initially was because we needed to make sure that the council was going to approve it. Similar to merit raises and um COLAs, we separate those in the budget each year, because council may or may not approve those, so we want to be able to yank them out pretty easily.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions for fire? Thank you, Chief Bingham.
Thank you.
All right, our next tab is building. Any counselors have questions or comments regarding building department? Okay, our next tab is parks and recreation. Anyone with questions, comments regarding parks and recreation? Mr. Chambers?
Mine's just a comment. I just couldn't, um, I was a little bit taken back uh about uh, we, we, we've got in the budget roughly about eighty-four thousand dollars just for vandalism in our parks, and I, I, I found that to be very sad, and I certainly hope that goes down, but uh anyway, just wanted to make that comment. I was just blown away by that.
Mr. Whaley?
All right. First of all, um, thank you, Kelly, for the over abundant um description and explanations. I, I, I appreciate it, um especially on the overtime justifications. I get that. I, I wish there was a way maybe that we could provide some additional part-time people to help move some of that, but that's some conversations that you can have with H R and then bring back before us. That's, that's the day-to-day stuff. The only other, well, two other things I had really is for the mayor. Um, I know we've had some conversations about the swimming pool. And I'm looking at the total budgeted amount for the pool, um, like as a hundred and seven thousand, twenty-two thousand, another hundred thousand for filters, and we're at two-hundred and thirty thousand, and revenue from that is around thirty-three thousand. At some point, I agree that we've got to determine i-if, if being in the pool business is in the best interests of the city. And I have mentioned and plan to um, look at this next quadrenium, um, some potential public-private partnerships to maybe provide a state-of-the-art, top-of-the-line aquatics facility that we can partner with, that uh, we can still offer the programs that we have, um, but we might have an opportunity to, to increase the type of facility we have through a partnership and um, probably not increase the budget that we spend on pools very much. So, just some, just something to think about and look at moving forward. I, I know we've had multiple conversations about the pool, and it's, I, I know it's a touchy subject with the public, and I, but it is a money pit, I can say that, because I have one in my backyard, it is a money pit, so. It's, at some point, we need to determine whether or not um, there's a course of action that could provide us with a better option.
Well, thank you for making those comments, and uh, yes, I appreciate it, all the conversations I've had with several up here and several in the past, that two of the things that are on our plate, on our table to watch out on, over, is our library and our swimming pool. So, during some of the next council meetings, I'll be talking about both of those, and I feel like that we're gonna need to do some type of uh, bore sampling of the properties around, especially, and I'm sorry, I'm moving, I've swam from the swimming pool over into the library, but uh, we need to know exactly what we have around those two structures, what can and cannot be done, uh, what is the best location, what is the, what is best for the community, and, and where is that, and are there any partnerships, whether it's with another entity, whether it's some, something like uh, the Pratt, or whatever it might happen to be, for whatever, because the partnerships can take us a, you know, a lot longer, uh, way, and a lot better pricing than if we attempt to do it all by ourselves, but I'm all in favor of looking at all the facts on that, and, but I think we all know this is not gonna be a cheap endeavor.
No, no, I agree, but, but we're, it's not cheap to keep what we have either.
Correct, correct, um, one thing I'm very mindful of though, is the senior aerobics, uh, because of my age now, but uh, you know, we, uh, that has become a very good program, and it's been, it's been a great quality of life for, I think about uh, a hundred participants a year, about a hundred a year, which I think is incredible, and um, so I think it's one area we need to take a good, hard, long look at, but not too long, not too long, because the library, uh, again, I don't swim from one end of the pool to the other, but the library is, is gonna be one of my top um, priorities as we move into, so exactly how we can plan for it. Uh, the swimming pool, um, there's, in the current budget that we're under, it is, um, I think they had some sand filters in there, we haven't replaced those, but that money will roll over, we'll need to add some more if we are going to come up with a long-range plan for what we have. Now, we do have some plans on the shelves from two thousand and eight or so, but I think they're probably way outdated and everything else. Uh, the other thing I would like to uh, back up over to is the overtime. Very proud of some of the things we've been looking at on how to control some of that, I know there's been some questions how this department has gone up quite a bit in the overtime, but those are real numbers, and if you're gonna have a successful PRAM like I think we have here in Prattville, you have to anticipate that, but one of the ways that we are looking to keep those numbers down, and the farmer's market is one example, um, have a great group of farmers that come in, and one particular one, I, I don't know if Saturday is not being in place at the farmer's market, so we're actually trying to utilize him as a manager, which then will actually help our, our staffers, because they, uh, again, that department is not an eight-to-five. I mean, you've been in it before, and a lot of us have participated some shape, form or fashion, but, um, and those employees can get wore down very carefully, quickly if we're not careful, so we are looking at, uh, trying to use, I guess, uh, part-time or summertime help, or outsourcing some more of that, uh, because then you don't have probably the higher-paying salaries, and you don't have the overtime, so, well, but farmer's market is one good example, and we're gonna be looking at other activities as well.
Okay, um, next thing, real quick, um, under, um, and Daniel, you may be able to answer this, Spillway Park, uh, we don't have electricity or vandalism budgeted for that, but we plan to open it pretty soon, correct?
We do have a lot of cameras.
Let's get it.
So, hopefully those cameras will pay dividends on that one.
Uh, yes, sir, what, what line item number?
Uh, six-four-one-oh-two-two-two-eight.
Two-two-eight.
Or two-two-eight-point-oh-one electricity?
For Spillway?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, so, uh, we could've guessed, but we don't really know, um, Kelly does have a separate electricity line item, that's kind of a catch-all for things that aren't separated by park, and it's towards the bottom with the other utility, so, we'll just funnel it in there and then split it out once we have some data.
Okay, and I don't have an issue with that, I just was making sure that if we're fixing to open it, that we were accounting for the electricity. The only other, only other question I have is under, um, Capitol Outlay, uh, whetstone parking and resurfacing, do we have some core sampling or compaction testing included in that?
We don't, you know, some of this is um, a really halfway newer type parking area, closer to the smaller fields.
So, it's not the big-
Some of it will be there, but this is also chip sealed, some area that's in District Three, and um, so we're, I believe I'm correct on that, right?
Yeah, I, I was just, because I've seen it-
Yes, sir.
-when it was fresh, pretty asphalt, and it didn't take very long before it, it was no longer.
Right, well, one good thing about putting something over it though, it, because it will sheet that water, so the less water, uh, the less um, uh, deterioration that you have or um, compaction, compaction there.
Good deal.
But, uh, but you have Spillway Park, uh, Parade of Pumpkins will be in a portion of the Spillway Park area, and then, but Spillway Park should be open somewhere around the first of December.
Further questions from councilors regarding Parks and Rec, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am. Hey, Ki-, uh, Kelly, I know you sent over this morning a detailed listing of some of the responsibilities of your staff, um, I was just wanting to know, are you guys maximizing? I, I see you don't have all your staff, but are you maximizing everyone that's eligible for overtime in your department?
Yes, so the only two people that are salary in the department is myself and David Morgan, and we are trying to work just as much as everybody else to try to offset, um, but everybody is all hands on deck.
And how many staffers do you have?
I have a hundred and eleven total, not full-time, but full-time I have twenty-five.
And part-time? One?
So, total is a hundred and seven, but then if you add cultural arts, it takes it to a hundred and eleven. Um, part-time consists of lifeguards, uh, concession workers, program aides, um, a lot of times we're, we're struggling with teenagers calling out, so then we, full-time staff have to cover football, baseball, softball, soccer, um, but yeah, a-across the gamut, we are wide open.
That's a lot.
It is, yes, sir.
Alright, and one quick last question on that, uh, I see the pole barn at, uh, Ridgewood, I see it's budgeted in here for sixty-five um, for next year's, did we not?
That's a separate barn, um, we are replacing the one that was damaged from the storm, and that's being offset also by insurance money. That is being replaced, uh, I believe they're starting next week, actually, and the barn that isn't existing now, uh, the roof is falling apart, nobody will touch it, it's, it's, it's fallen in, so this will be replacing the barn that is there also, there's multiple on site.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Further questions from the councilors regarding Parks and Rec? I do just have some response rebuttal to, uh, Mr. Whaley's comments regarding the pool, um, I know that he has been here a very long time. I know that he has, uh, worked with Parks and Rec closely, as have I, um, and I would just like to make comments to this council who will be going forward and to the administration going forward as to perspective on Parks and Rec and the swimming pool, uh, in the past, our perspective has been that Parks and Rec is not a business aspect of the city, uh, it has been that Parks and Rec is kind of a makeup. They are a quality of life aspect, and we make up for what they lose monetarily with what we gain through the quality of life that we provide for the citizens. So, moving forward, uh, as we look at a money pit like a pool, as well as, um, other aspects where we have, we have changed a lot of things, I know that, uh, concession stands and departments being taken over by the city now instead of parent-run organizations, I know that we have recouped money greatly, and that it has come a long way fiscal in Parks and Rec, and I'm very proud of that and seeing that, but moving forward, you must balance the perspective of, are you providing a quality of life for these, the citizens of Prattville? Or are you trying to break even or make money off of this department? So, I would just like for you to keep that in the back of your head as you consider moving forward with projects in this department, um, is what are you trying to do, what is, what are you trying to meet, are you just trying to run this like a business and you're going to break even, or you're going to make money um, with a swimming pool or with other things that are provided, or are you going to make up for that money somewhere else and provide quality of life that you feel like is um, important or necessary to the city? And I will obviously not be a part of that discussion, but it's just food for thought for the future, because I have seen it from both sides when I came in here, and Parks and Rec was losing, 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 bleeding out, hemorrhaging would be almost the word for Parks and Rec at the time, and obviously they have come a long, long way, um, just in, in fiscal responsibility and generating new ideas, but there are continuing areas like the swimming pool that, that can bleed you, so, uh, just food for thought for y'all as you move forward. Alright, next tab is creative arts. Councilors have questions, yes, or Mr. Chambers?
Yeah, I mean, excuse me, Independence Day Parade and Fireworks Show, um, line item says two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, twenty thousand, can I get a little bit more understanding what that, what that's gonna account for?
I'll, if you don't mind, I'll try to answer that, and I'm gonna keep, be very vague on that, because a lot of times whenever Kelly Carter and I are talking about certain programs, especially around Christmas and other, I don't really want to know what they're doing, I want to be surprised like everybody else, but I think as we all know, two-hundred-and-fifty years for our nation is coming up, and so we need to be, be prepared for that, and uh, I would like to leave that as um, incapable hands, without the rest of us knowing exactly what she's doing, so we can all celebrate it with a lot of awe and, and celebration like it really truly deserves.
We'll let you walk out of the room.
That, 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 I hope that might be the best non-answer you get today. But if she wants to come up and-
Well, you don't have to give me specifics, I guess just some generalities, I know it's based around the, the parade, but uh, I guess some added spice on, because it is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth?
Yes, sir, that's, that's what I'm hoping for, I asked her to, to put that in there, and, uh, because again, this has only come around once.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Other councilors have questions regarding creative arts? Alright, our next tab is community. And this is where we get into the feral cat situation. I had actually addressed that with, um, city staff as well, Mr. Whaley, that's something that, walking door to door, um, I saw with my own eyes, as well as heard from countless, countless people, um, as you knock on doors, you will hear the stories of why the cat is in the front yard, or how many cats are in the front yard, et cetera, so, I'm, I'm very aware and a, a big fan of this program. Mr. Mayor?
Could we go back, uh, one, I'm sorry? And do it all over?
Alright, where do we go?
Uh, creative arts.
Uh, that's not far, yes.
Yeah, just one.
We can do it, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to make a comment about it, uh, that the creative arts also, uh, you know, includes our community chorus that performs, uh, throughout the year, they have an annual spring dinner concert, and, uh, they have the singing Valentines, also, uh, the Creek, the Creekside concerts, that is just a fantastic thing that we have. Many moons ago in the early two thousands, when they used to have the stage over, they performed over there, my band performed over there. Uh, we had a nice little turnout, but anyway, I think it's a tradition that we have that, uh, aside from the Parade of Pumpkins and our, our hallmark Christmas, the other things that we do during the course of the year, it's not just, hey, let's come to Prattville here and here. It's, it's, it's all year long, so I just wanted to say that, so, uh, and, uh, that's all, thank you.
Okay, back to where we were with community, any other comments, questions from councilors regarding community? Mr. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am, um, I'm trying to find my email, I think several months back where the rescue squad sent us an email about needing help with the skid steer. And I see where we're, uh, we have them budgeted at eight thousand dollars, and I know that they're essential, and I think they do quite a bit for our community, have we considered, um, helping them with that request for skid steer, I, um, I don't know anything about skid steers, but I know they referenced the situation out on Peasant Road where-
Yes, sir.
-the road was blocked, and where I think the fire or someone had to call them in to remove some trees, and I think they help us quite a bit with issues, you know, we'll clean up some trees, but have we considered helping them with that?
Yes, sir, yeah, and actually, um, hit me up, Daniel, we've, we have gone up on their, uh, annual allocation, and actually I had talked with, um, Mr. Mike, and I forgot his last name, but, um, we were looking at what we had given them previously, but I've also talked with staff to see if we might be surplusing one or getting one to a certain degree, similar to what we have done before with some vehicles, we have given one, I know to, I believe, a Toga, uh, Togable, given one to our, our Toga County Sheriff's Department here, and trying to help them out in, I guess, in more of an indirect way, that way, and, uh, but, uh-
So, you, you say you're gonna look into increasing it?
Not increasing the dollar amount, but seeing if we can't surplus a piece of equipment that they're looking for that will be beneficial to them and us as well.
How much is a skid steer?
I guess it depends on exactly what size you want to go with, is it low pressure or high pressure, you know, what attachments and everything else, but uh, you could probably spend fifty thousand to a hundred thousand? Higher than that now?
Oh, really?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
You're looking at anywhere from eighty to a hundred.
Okay.
A hundred plus, depending on how you put it.
And Pleasant, uh, and one reason why they went out on Pleasant Road, because that is a private drive street, and, uh, that's one reason why they they, uh, came out, I think initially when I got here, I think we were funding there like two-hundred-and-fifty dollars or so, so we had been, I think, very grateful, or we've helped them, helped us, uh, over the years.
Yeah, and I think we use them, don't we use them for other, uh, issues throughout the year, as far as cleanup?
Not, not a whole bunch, because we still have our street crew and our engineering crew, we have, um, uh, we, we do use them some, but, um, I, I think their dollar amount in here is fine.
Eight thousand?
Yes, sir.
You don't consider an inflation, gas, all those?
Well, again, this is the Toga County Rescue SWAT side, you know, side of it, so, I don't know exactly, right in front of me, what Toga County helps fund them, but, um, do you have that information?
No, I was actually trying to pull up my email now, um, where they sent in a request, and I was just, uh, not sure if they had, uh, anyone from, I don't, from the city had responded to their request.
I've talked with Mr. Mike, but I haven't, I haven't responded in an email. I've talked with Mr. Mike, but I haven't, I haven't responded in an email. But like I say before, they sent that request right because I was out on site of Pleasant Road whenever the issue was ongoing. And I actually passed them. I was coming out as they were going in. And I actually went back around and talked with them about, and more than one conversation with Mr. Mike because they're just a couple of blocks over from here. But we've, we've been very generous to them over the years.
Any idea how many calls they answer for us as a city throughout the year?
Be glad to look that up for you. No, sir, not, not right here.
Yeah, because I think they may, I think they provide a vital service. So I would love to see, okay, I think I have a note here where the, I guess the Toga County gives them like 27,000 for, for the, that's their allocation from them. So I didn't know if we need to possibly increase more.
I personally don't think so. Like I say, we have our street crews, we have our urban management. We actually have the Toga Creek Improvement Committee that does a lot of work up and down our, on our creek. So we have, we also have some times when the weather is really bad, our parks and recs. I know I've seen parks and recs out with chainsaws and, and everything else and.
Well, they just said they were overworked. Well, I'm, well.
That's during special circumstances. So, but again, that's, if I thought that they needed more, and I was the one who actually went to Mr. Mike. He used to work at Russell Doitt Center. I can tell you a whole bunch about him, but I. Searls, thank you, yes. So I personally have talked with Mr. Searls many times and did some research, talked it over with our finance director as well. Looked at some of the history and I, I think it's properly funded as far, especially since we have crews already that are in place. But there are times, there are times that we need all hands on deck, all of our county friends, whether it's Toga County, Elmore County, Montgomery County. So that's one reason why I feel like it's important to help them out.
Now, what about the EMA? I see where we're looking at 10,000 for them. It looks like there was a decrease. It looks like back in 2018, they got about 25,000, went down to 15 in 2020, 2019. They got 25. Is there any particular reason where decreased their allocation?
From 2018?
Yes, sir.
Probably have to go back to some notes, but all in all with EMA, they are a county department. It's mandated by the state of Alabama. And county department might not be quite the right word, but they are by state statute, the way I understand it. They are responsibility of, of whatever county that they come from, which we do, we are in two counties, as we all know. And so we have a good, I believe, a good working relationship with both EMA directors.
Now, we're not, I don't, so we're not giving the Toga County, not Toga, Elmore County, EMA any money, right?
It is not in the budget.
No, I was just curious. That was, I know they sent some emails and now I'm having trouble trying to find the emails. And I was just curious as to why we decreased, especially with, like we were just talking about how the city is growing. You got more.
Talking about with EMA?
EMA and even the Rescue Squad with the city growing, you know?
Well, again, they.
Yeah, I know they get money from.
They assist us, but they're not really, they, they're really a department up underneath the county.
Can I just add to that? So I, I'm familiar with what EMA functions provide us as a city. I do know that they are funded through the county and they are funded minimally through the state as the local agency. And that money is, is provided as a allocation for partial salary for the EMA director. The county is the primary funding agent for EMA. However, if, if nothing has changed, our local EMA in the Toga County has an agreement with the EMA director from Elmore County that anything that happens on this side of the interstate, which is in the city of Prattville, that they will cover that for them. If it's a fuel spill, reportable quantity, disaster, any, any of those type areas. So I'm coming from emergency management, feel like, emergency response, feel like they do provide a very vital task for us. I also know that they are the administrator for our Alabama Mutual Aid System, EMA grants and Homeland Security grants. That paperwork goes through our local EMA office. We have received quite a bit of funding that has come through our local EMA office. And they, they administer those grants for us. We used to do that in-house, I know because I personally did that. And the state EMA changed the way that that was done and said it was to be done through the local EMA point of contact for the county. So they do, in, in a disaster situation, help to manage and oversee the EOC. They provide a lot of different services for us. I, I'm not sure, I know when I was here before I retired, it was 25,000. It is reduced to 10, but I, I feel like they're providing us more service now than they did in 2018, 2019. So just, just some facts to add to the discussion.
Well, and don't want to disagree with you, but I, I will put our fire department up. We have a very professional fire department and they are on top of the grants. Actually, I know staff and I have to help sign off on a lot of those grants. And then when it comes to fuel spills, yes, they are out there on site. Our, I know our team also has a lot of those fuel spills. But again, this is a, a function that the state has mandated down that each county has to have one. And that is their funding. So I feel like that's adequate funding. And again, I just caution to some degree, sometimes if you're going to give, that means you got to take. So it's, I think I'd rather our additional, any additional funding you think about here, I would prefer it to go to our staff, our equipment. I have utmost confidence in our employees. And I'm just going to leave it like that.
There again, I, I fully understand the process of fire department grants. I have personally administered those. Without your local EMA director, you cannot get a lot of that money. So a lot of that money, whether we sign off on them and agree with them or not, a lot of that money is funneled down through EMA, through the local EMA director, who is the point of contact for the county. So without them administering the grant, submitting the reimbursements, having the reimbursements go through the county commission, the county commission then cutting us a check to reimburse monies that we expended. I'm just, I'm just saying I understand that they do provide a, a, a pretty, a pretty valuable service for us.
I'm not going to argue that, but I think our staff is, is well on top of, of all the grants. And I'd be glad to do some more research on all that. But again, it's, I would rather put our money in our departments than a county entity.
Are we, well.
I guess one question might ask, what exactly are other communities given to this position as well?
And I will research that and be glad to bring that back to you. My, I guess my only other comment for that would be the, the largest portion of our, our city is in the Toga County. We, we are a part of the county.
Yes.
And, and.
And a lot of, a lot of times, a lot of folks forget that.
I don't, I don't have.
Mr. Jackson, you have more?
Yeah, and I, I would like to see some research done, like you say, on what other communities are given. But again, we know, especially with gas prices, $8,000, what's that really going to cover for?
Well, again, this is a county. Yeah, yeah, entity is, not a city entity.
But they're working with us.
And I go ahead and tell you, I've, I've already talked with our neighbor on the other side of the interstate. And when it comes to EMA, they give absolutely nothing. We are larger than that entity. But I believe Elmore County is larger than the Toga County.
So would it be beneficial in the long run if we just go ahead and just cut out EMA 10,000, cut out the rescue squads 8,000, buy skid steer and just say, thank y'all for what y'all have done for us throughout the years? And we'll just rely, and this is nothing against, because I know you refer, reference how professional and how capable our fire and police are. And I totally agree. Those guys are great. So is it more beneficial just to say, all right, we're not going to work with you guys? We have what we have in-house. We just might as well take out the 8,000 and the 10,000?
Is.
No, I'm just saying.
Is that a real question?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd say it would not be beneficial at all.
Because I'm looking at $8,000 for the rescue squad who comes out and helps. And I mean, we know how expensive everything is. Their older crew and I think it was a smaller crew. I think I met some of them. I had no idea what type of services they provided. And most of them are up in age and they're volunteering their time. I think, I think, matter of fact, one of the organizations on here that we're giving some funding had an event and had them out. So they were working and they worked with this organization to provide the lights or whatever for their event. You know, just volunteering out of there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
What is this total budget?
What is our total budget?
Yes, sir. What are we looking at in this big old notebook that's in front of me?
117 million.
117 million, we're talking about 8,000.
Yes, ma'am. Again, I'm just going to say.
8,000?
I think they're properly funded in here. If not, I would have added to it. I think that the, the, trying to put forth a goodwill and the partnership of looking for a, another potential way to help one of our neighbors. Because I mentioned earlier, we've helped Togable, we've helped Toga County, we've helped Togable timed with, when they needed some sewer assistance. So it's, we're a lot bigger, better neighbor than a lot of folks know and think about.
Not saying that we're not, we're just, like I say, trying to possibly look at, yes, 8,000 and the 100, what'd you say, 117 million? But again.
Well, I just say, you know, community initiatives, they can go so many different ways. When the first time I got here, there had to be a lot of cutting that had to go on. Because there were so many, so many things that were added on, added on. And so again, I, I would put my support, financial and any other support in our staff, in our departments.
Can I, can I ask you a question, Marcus? Or even Whaley? What number do you feel like would be the number? If it's not eight? What, what would you feel like would be a fair number other than?
I was just trying to go back and find the email. I don't know if any of y'all can find the email, the request they made, I don't know. I just know they asked for skids. I just know they asked for skid steer.
Do you have an opinion?
And.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not saying what the best number for EMA is. They submit their proposal for community initiative money, just like everybody else does. A lot of that doesn't come to, a lot of those requests don't come to the council. So I, I don't, I don't know what their request was. I don't know what their justification for what their request was. I just know it was cut from 25,000 to 10,000. And, and you know, I'm just making a point that I feel like they provide a very vital service for us. And I don't know why it was cut. I, I wasn't on here, that was right about the time I was retiring. And I'm not saying that, that we go and add something to the budget tonight. I'm just, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, they had a request, they've been reduced for several years now. And, but they still provide a lot of vital services for us. If, if we feel like $10,000 is enough for emergency management, then.
Well, let's do some of that homework we're talking about and see where, where we feel like it lands. Is that fair enough?
Do I know?
Do some of that homework we were talking about with?
That's, yeah, that's fine.
I mean, I feel like it's fair enough, is it not?
And I guess even with the community initiatives, how do, how do we? What do they submit them to you guys? The community initiatives, like all these people on here, do they submit them to you?
To both departments. And we're actually fixing to streamline that. Daniel and I talked recently about sometime next year, after the count, beginning of the calendar year, to send out to everyone, make certain that he is, they go to his email address. Because there's been some that have gotten lost between the, the departments or lost in cyberspace or wherever. And I know one of them is Toga County Heritage Association. I believe that they asked for a $10,000 increase and that is not shown in this budget. And I have talked with Mr. Don and, and told him we're going, I will work on getting that increased.
So how is it possible to include the council on some of these community initiatives? Because I have talked with some other governmental bodies and they said that organizations submit their proposals and then they present it to the council, what the proposal, and they allow the council or the commissioners or whoever to help in the decision process based on what is requested?
Well, one suggestion I might have is that the, and I don't want to be the finance committee or the whole body, but to come out and figure out what are we going to give to all the community initiatives? Figure out, here's a dollar amount. It might be 10 million, might be 1 million. Don't, don't get excited, fall out on me by 10 million. But I think seriously, we need to figure out what is a realistic number that we, the city of Prattville, can afford? And then back into that.
Well, and that goes back to what I was saying, include, I guess all of us are included in that process. Because there are some organizations on here, I don't know who they are and I don't know what they've requested. Just like I'm trying to find an email about this group, you know, what was their request for this upcoming year?
Well, with the financial, financial challenges that we have had in the past, that would be definitely something I would suggest is that you figure out, and it would be great if there was a dedicated funding source. Because you know, there's going to be times our budget is going to go up, there's going to be times that our budget might come down. And so if we've already promised community initiatives, you know, a certain dollar amount and the revenues do come down, well, then that means our departments are probably going to be suffering more on that one. So I think it'd be great if there was some way that the council could determine a true funding source for it, have a dollar amount on there and then back all these numbers in there.
And that's fine. Like I say, as long as we are part of the, you know, we're informed of what the requests are moving forward.
If I may stop the discussion there, we're going to call for a five-minute restroom break. I know that some of the counselors and staff may need to take that. So we will adjourn for five minutes and we will reconvene at, say, 8:14. Ladies and gentlemen, if I could ask you to resume your seats, we will reconvene. The time is now eight fourteen. And we were on discussion regarding community initiatives. If we have further discussion under that tab, we certainly may continue that. Any further discussion regarding community? Yes, sir. Mister Whaley?
Um, just, just a question on our um, on our chamber allocation. It's, it's two hundred and fifty, the annual, the annual allocation is two hundred and then economic development events are, are budgeted at fifty. Um, is so if we don't have, it's kinda like a reimbursement, I guess, if we don't have events, then really our allocation is two hundred?
That's correct.
Okay. Alright.
I would like to address uh Mister Jackson's comments, even though he is not in here, oh here he comes, uh regarding uh council involvement as far as community initiatives. For many, many years, even before I sat on finance committee, um every year I call, email, reach out in some kind of way to either the mayor's office or to the finance office and ask regarding our community initiatives. Because at one time we even had, rural transportation was one of our community issues that was quite uh, I don't wanna use the word scandal, but it was quite controversial for a while. So for many, many years, uh community services, community initiatives has been uh an evolving, changing year to year thing, as, as Mister Mayor mentioned, our, our budget going up and down. So every year when we get to that, this year included, um I have made some calls, made some emails regarding how much did this one request? Are we meeting that? Are we going under? Are we going over? How much did this one request? And I asked specifically about the library, about the um, about the humane society, about um rescue squad, different ones that, that appear on our community initiatives for year to year. So being involved as a council, um while it could morph into something more formal, uh it has always been something that is available. There have been years when I have said, can we beat that? Can we meet that? Um, can we change that? So I have expressed my opinion personally to these departments for many, many years regarding community initiatives. So um it, it can be done on an individual basis and looked at, or of course it may morph into something different as the council so chooses. But that is the way I have addressed that particular, so I had no questions here because earlier in the week, I had already reached out and addressed um fin- funding for some of these initiatives. Further discussion regarding community? Yes, sir. Mister Jackson?
Give me two seconds, I'm sorry. Alright, Mister Oakley, um I see where we're looking at ACBOE with the one penny for six hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Of course, that's minus the three fifty, three hundred and fifty-five for the resource officers. Have we started looking at how much of that one penny we have, will have allocated past that twenty twenty-six deadline? To where we can re, go back and reallocate our distributions? Have we looked at that yet?
Have we looked at what?
How much do, how much of this one penny will be unallocated?
Yeah, so there's a.
Cause I know we have six ninety-nine and I'm just already knowing we'd need to look at next year.
Right, so the two agreements that we have currently in place do end September thirtieth of twenty-six. So um that would free up in essence this amount of money, but also the Central Alabama Community College funds. So those would need to be reallocated in some way. Is that what you're asking?
So are there any other funds from any other buckets that are not allocated beyond when this has to be renewed?
Yes, so I mean, um there's actually a flow chart, um I gave you a copy a couple of months ago. It's kind of a traffic light flow chart. There's red, green, uh yellow. And those indicate, that just takes a snapshot of a budget. I think it may have been the twenty-five budget that was on there. And that kinda shows you what's been allocated long term versus what's allocated more on a annual basis. So a lot of the other buckets will say facility maintenance, uh um public facility, excuse me. That bucket has some that's been allocated long term, um but then it's a lot that's allocated on a, a annual basis, you know, in the budget process. Parks and Recreation, the vast majority of it has been allocated long term with the bigger, larger projects that we did with the tier-one projects, but also with um Spillway Park and um Newton Park Phase Two, Vista Point Park. So it, it really depends on which bucket you're looking at. But that, that would be a really good starting point that I would suggest is take a look at that flow chart. There's some copies out on the counter out there. And um I've tried to make notes in there and when things kinda roll off.
Okay. I, and I guess the reason I'm asking that is because um a couple of months back, I heard education, 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 education. And I don't see where we have made any indication in our budget request process where we're increasing funds for education. I do realize that there is, there are um funds that are allocated through or, or there are buckets that are already established through the, the date in twenty twenty-six. Um, so I guess my question is, I mean, we heard a lot about education through the entire process of, of uh the, the municipal elections. And so my question is, moving forward, what are we, what are, what are our plan? What are we, what are we looking at as far as education? Um because rel- relatively the same amount that we gave last year is not an increase in funding for education. I mean, it, it was a pretty hot topic item and I was at one of the forums and watched the rest of them and um I heard education over and over again. Um, and I, you know, I just, what are we looking for? Because tonight we're hearing um the one cent is very important for facilities and this and that. And I'm not saying it's not. Um, but if we're already saying, hey, we can't touch that because we're gonna have to have that in the future, um we can't touch Parks and Rec bucket because we've already extended that almost to, to the end. You know, what, what, how many buckets do we have left and how much money? And I, and I can go through the flow chart. I'm just saying that I'm, I'm asking what, what is our plan? How, how are we going to look at providing additional funding for education in the future? Or are we saying that we have too many issues within the city, we can't do that?
Is that a question for me?
Just an overall, general question.
Okay, I'd be happy to let you know, uh you, as well you know, so CAC is a five, a five-year agreement, BOE is a five-year agreement. Those roll off at nine thirty of twenty-six, so those are available for reallocation at that time. The council has, and both of those are approved by the city council. The council has also approved the funding for two million dollars over the course of five years for the Pratt, which is four hundred thousand dollars a year. And that, should that project come to fruition. So it's kind of earmarked until we make sure we see progress on it, right? So the rest of the bucket is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars that has not been allocated and it's set to go to reserves, just for this twenty-six budget.
Right. I, I'm just saying that what's our, I mean, and I know you can't tell me what our long-term plan is.
Yeah, that's why I'm struggling on the question.
But I'm saying that we have got to discuss it and I don't know when and where we discuss it. But you know, we get a proposed budget that we are to review and we have an opportunity to say, you know, this needs to go here or there. So, so I mean, do you want me to tell you, hey, take everything we got left in all those buckets and let's put it in education? I, I'm not saying that's the smart thing to do, but I'm saying where does the conversation begin on where we're going with education moving forward? Because if we forget about it, after we've gone out there and put it in the front of everything and said, yes, education's important to us, yes, education's important to us, and then we don't do anything, it's gon- it's gonna look pretty bad.
Well, I would like to remind everybody that uh during the initial conversations that everybody was having about the one penny and the education bucket, as it's called, uh the library was also a key component of that. And as I mentioned earlier, the building, we're gonna have to do something. And um, and that is on our table. That is our responsibility. So again, I don't want anybody to forget about education, but I don't want anybody to forget about uh the library as a part of education. And the swimming pool is a part of Parks and Recs, so.
I, and I understand that. I'm just, we're focused on the buckets. And I guess when this thing expires and we have to, to, to go back and relook at that, maybe we don't have as many buckets. Maybe we have a debt bucket and we have an education bucket. I don't know. But that's what I'm saying is where does the conversation begin? We, we've said, yes, we, education is important. We are going to provide money for education, but we have no plan to provide money for education. The one bucket and the one cent, there's never going to be an increase for ACBOE based on that. If, if we're, if we're only saying that it's got to come out of this one bucket, we're, we're gonna keep those buckets the same forever. I mean, we, so, at some point or another, some money gotta come out of another bucket in order for us to, to increase funding for education.
This, these four buckets where that one penny divided up in, cause it is very vital to infrastructure is what I actually said, which is the pipes and everything else. And we've gone through a lot of flooding issues and we've been able to, to um resolve a lot of that. And a lot of that has been because of the hard work of the, of the department, the employees and, and the, the fact that the council has allocated dollars to go toward projects there. But um we, the one penny is not gonna be able to fix everything.
No, I, I agree. So, so that brings me to my next question is what kind of alternative funding sources are we looking toward to increase revenue that we can support education?
May I address this? Um Mister Whaley, I think that, that your question is very valid and I think that there's a very clear answer, which is right now we are passing this document, which is a living, breathing, movable, changeable document. Anyone on this dais can make a proposal to change this anytime in the future. So I think that tonight we are trying to deal with this document and I think that you need to have, um going forward in the new quadrantium, there needs to be a set work session or series probably of work sessions facing the education topic with the new counselors who come on board, who will be voting on that and proposing their own ideas and solutions. And I believe that then you may address this document by amending it at any time with whatever ideas and proposals and sources that, that you come up with. I do not think that tonight is, I think that tonight's a great night to say, hey, we're missing a piece and we're going to address this piece in the future. But I, I do not think that among finishing these tabs on this evening is the time to, is the time to propose, yes, there is a missing chunk, but I don't think that you're going to find that chunk tonight. I think that it needs to also include the, the new staff members you will have. And I believe that's going to take a series of, of time.
Um, thank you. I agree. And I wasn't trying to say, hey, let's figure it out tonight. But I'm saying that we are voting on a budget that has no increase for education in, period in the sentence. That's all I have to say.
And I guess I'd like to say for the record is that uh we are waiting on some additional information from the Board of Ed or the superintendent. And then also we're waiting for some additional, additional information from Skipper and Associates, I believe, is who we had hired to do the traffic study area from I sixty-five over to thirty-one. And that's where the partnerships with the county are gonna be so, so important.
Is there further discussion regarding the community tab?
Um, yes ma'am. The library, I see where they're asking for, what are we asking for? Four hundred and ten thousand? I think last year was what, three fifty? Now they're up to sixty thousand. Have they, I mean, I know that there have been some citizens requesting information um by breakdown of how they spent their money over this past year. We know that they've been closed and things like that. Um, have they submitted any of those? I know we've had requests from several citizens, but is that something that you've requested?
I have not requested any. Uh, one thing I would like to touch base on this one, it was that uh, uh the director came to me and, or the chair came to me and said they wanted to give a raise to the employees there. And he was also going to the county at time. And when we first talked, that was pretty much, we're gonna pay a certain amount. County's gonna pay a, a certain amount. And then he came back to me and said, the county at that time said, we're not going to, to partner with you on that. So we actually added a little bit more into what we were initially gonna put in here. And after the budget was basically printed, then I found out additional information is that the county, the Otoga County is going to assist with the uh potential pay raises. And if it's um, let me get my glasses out here, see if I have this readily available um on here. But it is basically there to prove uh how the. But it is basically there to prove how the raises are divided up and the raises are given. I think some of the discussions for the contract with them on, not on the big dollar, the big part of this budget, but the sixty-five something thousand, let's see. Seventy-four, okay, thank you. My page is got, okay. Yeah, let's see, three fifty is what they had been getting. We put sixty thousand in there. So, I need to get back and see exactly what are they going to be needing for us. And some of that is going to be a sliding scale because it all depends on how many employees they have here at the Prattville branch. And I think the talk was, we go ahead and give them some money for the first quarter. And then after that first quarter, they will emit receipts and everything for you to calculate second quarter through. Is that about a good summary?
Yes, yeah, we can do it that way for sure.
Anyway, the pay raises for staff is an estimate and may not require all the budgeted funds as, as shown. But we were, and I guess technically that again will be a contract.
For us, is it possible for us to see how they've spent their money over the last year or two?
I, I don't know what, if they're held to the same requirements we are as public information request.
I, I mean, wouldn't you be able to get it to them considering we're going to be giving them, while they're requesting that we give them four hundred thousand? See, wouldn't they be able to give it to you, you think?
Um, when I go to them, I'm Joe Q. Public, just like you.
Or should it be action, will it require action of the council? Should we, as a council?
They're not under, the, the big dollar amount is not under a contract for services. So, I mean, I don't know, they might just end up giving you the, their audit.
The financial, they, they have an annual audit and that the conclusion or somewhere in those financial statements, they refer to readers to the library to come pick up a copy of it. So, they should be able to, anyone should be able to go pick up a copy of their annual audited financial statements. Now, for this current year, they won't be ready yet because it hasn't been audited, I'm sure. But for twenty-four, you should be able to pick up a copy.
Would we require council action where we can ask them to send us a breakdown of their budgets over the last two, the previous two fiscal years?
So, it would take more than just council action, would take a agreement that we're getting this funding. And in return for this funding, we will provide you X, Y, and Z, similar to what was before the council two years ago that was voted down. And if you recall, I talked about the AG opinions in my discussions with the league. We can fund them, but unless we have a specific agreement, they, they run their own show. They don't have to provide to us the details of how that funding is spent because they are an independent, self-governed body. So, I mean, that would require revisiting what we were looking at a couple of years ago.
So, so get us, let me get us straight. They want an increase in funding from us, but we don't know what the money's being spent on.
Well, in this increase, we would.
Well, we need to know, it needs to be broken down as to why they need additional money and where's it going?
It would be, it would be for pay raises. And then, because it's additional sixty grand. But again, that would be a, I'm certain it's going to be a smaller number. I don't know exactly, and they probably don't know exactly because I think as we all have sort of heard tonight, when you start looking at pay plans and everything else, it's hard to calculate everything down, down to the penny. But anyway, that's why working with our finance director.
Where do they get this number? I mean, I know, all right, pay raises, but day-to-day activity, I mean, and like you said, the county, they're not going to kick up.
Well, now, they, it has been brought back to me that they are going to participate now.
Well, I'd like to know that amount too. So, I mean, before we say, okay, we're going to cut you a check for this, we need to know what the money's being spent on.
Well, and I guess our, my thought of a safety net is to, and if this is sixty, if you do the quick math, fifteen, give them the fifteen and then they provide, because they need to pay the employees, then they have the documentation. And that's where we would validate that for the second quarter, third quarter. Which it might be a, we've given them too much for the first quarter and they don't get as much the second quarter. Or maybe they hadn't gotten enough. I don't know exactly how they've done their math, but they told me this is what they needed to give their employees a pay raise. But I was very specific about being the employees who work here in Prattville and not in the other branches around the county.
So, have they given you a breakdown of the employees that, in Prattville that will be receiving this raise?
I have not gotten a breakdown. Like I say, I've just given, been given the dollar amount. And that's where the contract for services, the big right word to use, Mr. Andrew, in this particular line item, the sixty thousand dollars, that's where you'd get that information.
So, basically, we may need to hold off on giving them anything until we work out some type of contract so that we can have some accountability.
I, I don't agree with that. I think that if we decide that we're going to pay up to sixty thousand or whatever the new number is, after we subtract the county allocation here, then through a current contract that Finance Director and, and our attorney over here work on, city clerk as well, whoever is going to work on all of that. And that's where you spell out A, B, and C.
Because they were closed for what, six months from, yeah, I think she said they were closed for six months.
Yes, sir, but now that was, there again, that's under that other monies. That's under the, the big dollar amount, the three fifty.
Yeah.
Three fifty, there again, we, they could, they could be closed for the rest of the year after they get to three fifty, after, for twenty twenty-six. And there's nothing we can do about that. Now, if it comes to the sixty thousand, now we could do something about that if we have a contract for services. But if we give them the first round, and who knows, maybe y'all say, no, don't give them any. Make them bring back records for the first quarter and we pay them in the rears. But I just feel like that the best way to do this one is give them the first quarter, let them bring back receipts and we adjust it. What do you call it with the jail, we sure up?
We used to true, do a true-up at the end of the year.
Basically, true-up as you're going.
Because I would love to see how much of that money has possibly been used for litigation. I, I mean, I, I just want to know because we have constituents that have repeatedly come up to the dais over the last couple of years asking.
Well, the sixty thousand, wouldn't any of that be able to get to that?
Yeah, 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 no, 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 no.
Right.
No, I'm just, I just want to see what's been going on prior to. So, again, just some, some type of accountability. I mean, that's a lot of money. And then, of course, there's been, there've been a lot of issues. And I just think for us as a governing body, City Council, we need to know what's going on and what they had going on to make sure.
Well, again, this is a request by them to give their, their attempt to give their employees a pay raise. And I don't know when they got their last pay raise or anything else I have. Because again, I'm Joe, once the money is given to them by basically council action, I am Joe Q. Public, I do go over there to, is my role, but that's basically the role of mayor. But that's basically when it's building or land type issues, nothing. I cannot instruct their, their chair, their board, or their employees.
I guess I'm just counting, okay. Yeah, we need to figure something out before we just give them this money. So, I think we're going to have to think about this moving forward.
And if you don't mind me asking, which monies are you talking about there? The, the three fifty or the sixty? Because I would like to give them my heads up.
Yeah. And I'm going to go back to this. Now, are they saying that they're needing to get a new building? Because I heard that that just recently came up, so.
I, I would like for us to have a new library. I think they would like to have a new library. But as I've talked with some counselors and council-elect, the dollars, if we're going, keep going back to the bucket or however we want to, you know, talk about it. I don't want to fix this building, but I truly believe that's going to be our end result. I think we need to go ahead and put more money into the ground over there to see exactly what the soil composition is. Because I, I truly believe that we're probably going to need to add a wing on to that damaged area, not just rebuild it as it is. Because then you get no more square footage. But if you could add a wing on to it, give them more square footage. But again, I, I would like to have the funding for a brand-new library. But I truly do not see it coming down the pike.
And I've heard you say many times, you don't think that's the place, you know, that they need a new place, but here we are.
But as you mentioned, it's been closed for how many months, but that wasn't their fault.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm not saying it's their fault, no, no, no.
Sins of the past.
Is there any further discussion regarding community?
Just a comment. You had mentioned about streamlining the process of how different organizations request money. This may be Andrew's question more than you, but I think if we are, if these groups are requesting monies, taxpayer dollars, then we should be able to hold them accountable for every penny they spend.
I, I agree with you.
So, if we streamline this process, can we put something in a contract or whatever you want to call it to hold these other organizations accountable?
It would have to be ninety-eight percent of them are held accountable through contracts. And we do our best to continue to check on those and make certain the information they bring back to us periodically and definitely before the next budget cycle comes along. But again, with the, with the library, normal customary has never been a contract for services. And it was attempted once before.
Yes, Councilor Sanders, so I had the pleasure of reviewing quite a few contracts this week. But yes, as the mayor mentioned, just about every one of these entities does have a written contract. And then I go through and look at what it requires of that entity. And then I have discussions, have they met? Have they failed to complete those requirements? And I mean, that all goes into the discussion as far as allocating funding, keeping it the same, decreasing it, increasing it. So, they're held to the contract when it comes to the services they render.
Again, I know I'm short time and, and Mr. Newman had the pleasure of doing this here in just a little bit, but I highly encourage you, one hundred percent of the organizations that the city's giving money to should be held accountable.
And then one, well, maybe two, three questions. All right, and I think I know what this is. With HPR, HPRA demolition, I'm sure that was for the grocery store, right? The thirty thousand dollars in the budget.
Sir, how much?
The thirty thousand, was that for the demolition?
No, sir, that is for the old gas station catty corner to us.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I made an assumption, so, all right. Boy Scout Memorial Movement, what is that?
That is one that was, a presentation was given a couple of years ago. It is to be a project over on the, basically on the side or the front of the courthouse on Fourth Street side. And that is in there. And now, the young gentleman has come back to us and he's gone also to the county. I've talked with him and the county commissioners as well. But I think the county and city on the same sequence is that he doesn't get that money until he comes basically back with a receipts or a contract of services or, not contract of services, but.
Yeah, it would be on a, it, the plan was to have it on a cost reimbursement basis. So, he's got to, it, it's a, it's a great idea, but we want to make sure it comes to fruition, similar to the Pratt.
And maybe one thing we could do here is actually after this year, just put a footnote in there that has been discussed. And I know some of the council was very much in favor of this, how it, you know, ended up in here. So, we could, we need to make certain these dollars are put to good use every year. So, if need be, we could just put a footnote in there that council has basically given a nod to this. We use the money elsewhere. And if he comes back, then we can, we can probably find another ten thousand without a lot of digging.
I'm looking at the two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty with the Chamber of Commerce. Has that, how has that situation worked out? Has that been beneficial and best for us operating this way with them? Two hundred thousand and I guess the fifty thousand for events that they host for the city?
I personally, I personally think so. I think we have a good working relationship internally, externally. I think some of our recent announcements are some of the proof there. They're going to be, we partner with them on some downtown projects. We have some more downtown projects we're going to partner with together and everything. So, it's, I think we have a great working relationship. It's working really good inside the executive branch.
And also, I guess this last one, I guess with this one organization, I think with the historical markers, you know, you and I have talked. And I think we need to see probably the breakdown on some of their allocations considering alleged involvement in some election activity, which we know that that's a no-no for nonprofits. So, I would like for us to look into that before it, before it potentially.
Excuse me. Well, the allocation for, in the proposed budget, it's about future markers. And it is basically a reimbursement type setup. We will not give them any monies. At least that is the discussion we have had with the next contract with them. So, that way, if they have a, come back to us with additional markers, because I'd definitely like to have one up in front of the, the junior high because that is definitely historical landmark up there in the College Heights area. But I'd still like to see this, this project move forward. It's, I think it'd be very important to the community because a lot of the history is, the mine is a great thing, but sometimes the memories can, can fade, especially when others are leaving us left and right.
Yeah, no, and I agree. I think you say, you, you mentioned this to me maybe twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Twenty seventeen, yes.
Somewhere in there, yeah. And I, 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 I completely understand the importance of doing that, you know? But it's all so important having the right.
I think I know what you're trying to say there. And, and again, this is, I feel like this is a project that I've been pushing for. And I do want to see it come to fruition while I'm here. But it's going to be on my front burner, so to speak.
And I, and hopefully moving forward, the council, and I, and I would love for us to be able to have access to the contracts for services and organizations that make proposals or make requests to the city. I think it would be beneficial to us to have that and to be a part of the decision-making process. I can definitely say during the campaign cycle, I talked to a ton of people, black, white, disabled veterans, and they've all asked, what do you guys have as a city for us? So, I would love for us to research some community initiatives to pot, potentially look into helping some of our disabled, some of our disabled veterans, maybe some financial literacy, you know? I just think it's essential and to see, it was, there was one older white couple, I was out in Bent, not Bentree, Buena Vista, and she reached out to me, I helped her. uh, Buena Vista, and she reached out to me. I helped her take her groceries in and she's telling me how sick her husband is. He's had multiple strokes and she's like, what do you all have as a city to help us?
Well, on that, uh, financial, uh, literacy, uh, that might be one program. We could, um, prob, possibly write into the North Island Community Center contract to see if they could, uh, more talk with them to see if they might be interested in that. You know, and not, and not all these community initiatives come, I guess, in that direction where someone comes to us. Uh, the newest member of this, Feral Cats, that was basically an internal, um, movement there and a lot of that. Cause, uh, I guess the finance director wanted, wanted our police chief to smile a little bit, because he did not want it in his budget. And, uh, but no, I really do, I really do hope that this council, uh, will look at, uh, what is going to be the best process for this community. And I think finding out what that dollar amount is and then backing into it. And because I would like to take as much off of our staff as possible on that.
Yeah, I, I was looking at Birmingham, of course, they are a large, larger municipality, but they have a program where they help, uh, citizens with minor home repairs. You know, where you fill out applications, you know, and they review, of course, but they help them with those minor repairs. Maybe it's a disabled family that may need a ramp, you know, but that may be something that we can.
Well, I think Head Start, um, thinking Head Start, I think Head Start might actually help out with some of those. I think Head Start programs, I think they also have, um, um.
Not Head Start. What do you call that? Not Head Start, Head Start's, uh, education, little kids, uh, no.
No, it's not Habitat, it's, um.
Habitat.
Hey, and now they, and of course they do have a process for the roofs. I don't know, and they might have one. Uh, but now I was thinking of another one, um, but you're right, it's not Head Start. But there are some programs out there that the state, it might be some along the lines of a CDBG type setup, but, um.
But I would like to see those type of community initiatives, if we can potentially find the funding to help us with.
I guess that's going to be one of the, going to have to have some legal advice on, on what we can do, uh, and what we cannot do. Um, because I know with the LRAP program, it took us like six years to be able to get a legislative act for us to take our funds, the taxpayer funds, and basically loan them interest-free to a private en, entity, uh, individual on private property. So there, we got to make certain all the boxes are checked. But I do think that bigger communities like Birmingham, they have a lot different, um, opportunities for that than smaller communities. But again, I'm going to suggest, recommend that a, um, dollar amount come up with, funding source prefer, preferably, and back into that with these community initiatives.
Is there any further discussion regarding community initiatives? Moving to the next tab, transfers. Gas tax. Capital projects. Waste water. Sanitation.
I'd like to ask some about sanitation. Tracy, how, how many, you're, you're, you're a head count right now is obviously not where you needed to be. I know you're having a hard time filling positions. Well, I know it's a tough job and it's, what, what's your, what attributes to, to your turnover problem, would you think?
I think it has a lot to do with the, the requirements of that job. There's, it's a lot of physical, hard work, dirty, it's a hard job. And, and, and I said, as I talked with the committee the other day is garbage never stops. And so I think that when we look at that, you have, you have a lot of segments of this department that have a slowdown time, but sanitation is just not like that. And so at the end of the day, no matter what variables that come our way or get in front of our task, we, I say that when I walked in the door, twenty fifteen, I say it now, it is a production-driven job. And you, the citizens do not have, to a degree, no mercy about your, your issues in front of you. They do not care.
Absolutely. Well, do you have a suggestion to help with your turnover? I mean, if you.
I think we did a lot of things and, uh, I, I'll say to the council we had here, the mayor, we, we made this process a whole lot more mechanic, a lot of mechanism inside of, uh, I know the city is growing now. Uh, I've had the luxury and the blessing, I think, that we caused some decisions to, to put some equipment in here and take some of the fiscal work away from the guys. And also we had the luxury also, I think I was just lucky about that, how we set the routes up from Memorial to how we got it set up in precincts, all the growth actually went in a lot of areas that we basically was only using about sixty percent of our capacity. Uh, we have made several changes in our division now, you know, we started, when I got here, we had the real loaders, we, uh, I remember Elvis Creek and throwing out the idea, we got all of them and then Tracy got rid of most of them. But we got some big trucks with about a eleven, twelve minute cycle time dumping a can to, now we made adjustment of one, about seven point two seconds to dump a can out. Uh, so how the home building is, is being built in the sickness, it actually a blessing to us because all of your McLean areas and everything to this side was actually put in areas that we, based on our current route structure, where we done away with the two routes and the one route and I put everybody in one precinct area picking up. It gave us a lot of flexibility and we continue to looking at that now, because, uh, everybody know out in the Glenbrook area is growing big out there. And I haven't got a chance to even, uh, talk to the mayor about this or some other people, because we made some adjustments four, five years ago and may do some adjustments again. Um, putting a additional truck there, but also on Wednesday, taking the truck from the country that we put cans on, put it back to a Monday route, so we can put more focus to the top side. This is a, a trial area thing. And so sanitation, our employees are very important to us. We want to get, I think we had twenty-one, we would like to get to twenty-six. But it also is a strategy, how you lay this thing out, because you have a lot of variables in the day. Mechanical issue, you got a lot of things playing in this game.
Any other questions regarding sanitation? Yes, sir, Mr. Whaley.
Just real quick, um, so I'm looking at the total revenues and the, and the total expenditures. And, um, I mean, we're pretty close.
Pretty close.
So, but if we're going to increase because of increased capacity, no, more rooftops is going to equate to more dollars coming in, because there's going to be more trash cans. But it also equates to, um, more trash cans to empty. So if we're looking at that, when was the last rate increase?
Twenty twenty-one, I think.
Twenty, a one dollar increase in two consecutive years.
Okay. And, and I'm not saying do that now, I'm just saying for future reference for next year. And I don't see it in there listed under next year, and I may be missing it. I know there are a few things that are associated with next year, but I mean, nobody wants to hear that. I don't want to have a rate increase, but I mean, let's be honest, if it costs us more than what we're bringing in to provide the service, at some point there have, we, we ought to have that discussion. Not tonight, but just moving forward, so.
We had a com, committee meeting of the, today and I, I say this and I, I still say it again. Uh, yeah, we're putting a lot of rooftops on, but our maintenance costs, we going from four, five years ago, maybe one hundred eighty, we spending almost three hundred thousand dollars in. And at that time, we still doing a lot of, I call my old style stuff I learned from my previous job that, um, I'm saying, no, we're not going to buy cylinders, we're gonna, we're gonna repack them. Or someone, the other day we had an individual wanted to change a thirty thousand dollar python arm out there. I said, no, I had a weld on it. We're going to gouge it out, we're going to wheel it back up. And those kind of techniques are used in this department. If we was to follow the trend of not knowing this process, not being involved with it, we would already be in trouble. Uh, if you looking at twenty-ten, we paid two hundred and ten thousand dollars for a truck. That same truck, they three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, and them trucks getting driven hard. And it's just a cost of garbage business now. And we seeing it every day.
Any further questions or comments regarding sanitation?
Yes, ma'am, one question, Tracy. So for this year, you're looking at an ASL truck purchase of three hundred thousand and two for ninety for this year and for next year?
I would like to have, what I looked at now, we, thanks to everyone, we got some, all of our lim load of trucks, we got within a twenty-three, twenty-four mile of it. Most of them are still up on a warranty. What I try to look at every year is what are actually causing us to operate them trucks? And what I'm seeing now is those XL trucks that we currently started purchasing those, twenty nineteen. Uh, the last one we got was in twenty twenty-three, that bigger one. Uh, but we had some others between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one. Uh, we had some re-end problems this year, we had some gearbox problems this year. Those trucks are costing us about thirty thousand dollars to each to operate. That's mechanical issue. What I did not draw the conclusion, I talked to Dana closer about that, I did not want to put the, the trigger on doing that going this year, because it also costs us about two hundred percent more to purchase a new truck. So you got to make your analysis of what's most beneficial. Have we still been at two hundred thousand dollars for one of them trucks? I'd be saying, yes, of course we want to give it, because we all more can get two for the price of one now. So now I got to use some of my old time techniques to try to keep them on the road. And that's what we face every day, every day.
Our next tab is judicial. Any questions or comments regarding judicial? And our last tab is DSF, Department, um, Debt Service Fund. Any comments or questions regarding debt service?
My only comment then is we need to be very aware of our debt moving forward and the amount and how long that is. And I know we have reserve funds and that's great, um, but if we continue to add debt, we need to continue to add reserves. So I don't, I'm not, I don't think there's any thought process to stop putting money in reserve, but we, we need to make sure that, I, I was here when we couldn't afford a pencil or toothbrush. I mean, it, it's, and I, and I don't want to be sitting up here and us ever get back in that position again, so that's just my.
Other comments about debt service? Mr. Jackson?
Um, Mr. Oakley, um, says here, many of these projects are saying that they're being paid out of developmental reserves, debt proceeds, yet some of the projects say out of fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget proceed, debt proceeds, like City Hall, Annex, uh, Vista Point, Newton Park, Spillway. So are more bo, bonds or warrants going to be reopened on some of these?
You, you referring to the Capital Projects Fund? No, so the, that is leftover debt proceeds from the twenty twenty-five issuance that we haven't spent yet, because those projects haven't moved forward, um, or they have, um, remaining expenditures to be had. We're not issuing any new debt in the general fund. I will say though, that we do have budgeted, um, some new debt in the wastewater fund for large projects, um, primarily the Otaga Creek plant upgrade. Um, I will say that that is listed in there at roughly, you know, having in front of me, roughly nine million dollars or so. That project is a thirty million dollar project. It's anticipated we might spend nine million of that if everything goes like it's planned. Um, but I don't want you to think it's just nine million. Total project is much larger than that. But the only debt that we have budgeted, um, is in the wastewater fund for this year.
Further questions on debt services? At this time, I will open the floor for, we'll go, uh, member by, member by member, uh, for closing comments and finish up with the mayor. Mr. Sanders, do you have any closing comments for this evening? Mr. Jackson?
Um, I did have several, uh, of my bosses and I called the citizens, our bosses, that, um, submitted questions, texts, emails. And, um, I will be sending them to you all. And I would ask you all to please respond and give them an answer. I know that we talked quite a bit during the election about transparency. And, uh, we're just moving forward and I just want our citizens to know that when we talked about transparency, that we really and truly meant that. So, um, we just want them to feel, uh, moving forward that we are being fiscally responsible. We're doing what's right for them as a city. So I will be submitting some of the questions. Some of you guys, I didn't ask the questions that you may have asked tonight, but I will make sure to get them those, uh, get the, uh, responsible parties these questions so that you will have an answer before we, uh, pass this budget. And I would like to say moving forward, after talking with some other municipalities, you know, moving forward, um, I would love to see us maybe do some work sessions, you know, multiple work sessions, so that we don't have to sit here three hours. And, uh, uh, and actually, we could probably go longer, because like I said, I do have more questions. But I'm going to be respectful to everyone else and not asking tonight. But, um, yeah, let's just be more respectful and, and, uh, well, not respectful, but considerate and look forward to maybe spreading out some of these work sessions over a two or three day, uh, timeframe. Also, like we said, with the community initiatives, I would love for us as a council to be able to see, uh, those contracts for services, the requests ahead of time and like to be involved in the, uh, process moving forward and determining who receives what from the city. Because it did, again, it comes back to us as a council. But any, anyway, thank you to all the department heads for putting together these presentations. We appreciate your hard work and, uh, thank you.
Mr. Chambers, I was just going to say how long you'd sit there now.
Wake up. Um, thanks to the department heads and their staffs. We appreciate all the hard work you put into this budget, um, your time and effort are very appreciated. Uh, also to the department heads, thank you so much for, uh, taking my calls and, and answering those questions that I had. Um, you know, like everybody else, I've had several constituents reach out and wanted to make sure that they, they did get those answers. Um, and I felt like we did have some good discussion tonight and I appreciate everybody's feedback and, uh, know that there's more work to be done and I just look forward to, to, to getting that done. Thank you.
Mr. Merritt?
Uh, just to not piggyback too much on what Councilman Chambers said, but, uh, thank you to, uh, well, thank you, Lisa. Uh, just to, not piggyback too much on what Councilman Chambers said, but, uh, thank you to, uh, well, thank you Lisa before we leave. She's on the phone. Uh, but to our department heads, um, thank you too, right over here, for everything that you do. Uh, and, uh, I think this was good tonight and, uh, and we'll just go from there. Thank you.
Mr. Whaley?
Yeah, real quick, just thank you again. I, I know the department heads have already been thanked. Um, but, you know, I've been through this process on the other side. I, I've put, I've put a budget together for one of the large departments in the city. Um, and on a special assignment, put a, a budget together for several departments within the city, um, not by myself, of course. And I, and I say that to say that the amount of work that the department heads put into that, thank you. But also go back and thank your members that provide that information for you, because I know you don't do it by yourself. I know that you have good people that work for you that provide you the information that you need in order to compile your budget request. Um, again, thank you to the finance department, to the mayor. Uh, it's, it's not easy to put a, a proposal, um, of, of a hundred and seventeen million dollars together. Uh, and it's not easy for us to review it and, and look at it and, and not question some things. I mean, there, there, we, we should have some questions on it. Um, but I, I don't think that anything was put in the budget, um, maliciously or, or without thought beforehand. I, I know for personal experience that this budget process is about a five-month process. Um, we've had it for two weeks. Y'all been working on it since May, or, or maybe March. So, uh, I appreciate the work that goes into that. Um, take a couple of months and start working on next year's budget.
Mr. Strachey?
Yeah, this is my ninth one of these, and I just wanna thank all the department heads for answering my questions ahead of time, before we got here tonight. And, uh, responding to my questions once I've gone through the book. And, uh, hopefully it saved a lot of time, since a lot of you did respond and I appreciate your response and, uh, you know, you, you learn after a while to, um, get ahead of some of this stuff and, uh, very responsive, very responsible. Uh, I think when I first started, I wanna say we were around forty million, probably for our budget. Um, the way this city has grown and the positive things, and it comes from you sitting, the department has been responsible for your money. That we are able to do a lot more things for our citizens than we did nine years ago. So, uh, great job to the council, great job to the city employees who work tirelessly every week and every month to make this a better place for all of us to live. So, uh, great job, everyone.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, and echo a lot up here, you know, thank you to the department heads, because, uh, you know, this is basically, their budgets in, in my hand and, uh, and, you know, a lot of these projects are, are some that have been waiting around for, for many, many years. Um, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, the, the budget, I think, is worthy of passing as is, but if we are gonna give to one, that means we gotta take from another and just be mindful of some of the projects that's talked about with wastewater, we have McQueen Smith Road, we have so many projects. We've been able to accomplish a lot. But we have a lot to still accomplish over this next year and the rest of this upcoming quadrillion. So look forward to working, uh, hard for this community and again, thank you to, um, Carly G. and Daniel. Thank you. Uh, because municipal, municipal finances is not an easy animal to where I'm really looking here. You have to live it, eat it and breathe it to really know it. And these two are actually just gems for us all, so appreciate, um, everything y'all do and all the department heads as well. So, ma'am, this, uh, Madam President, in my comments.
Thank you, sir. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. All in favor, say yea. Any pays nay. We are adjourned.